...with Sedgwick County. This meeting can be viewed live on KPTS Channel 8. We are also live streaming it on Sedgwick County's Facebook page and YouTube channel. Commissioners have plexiglass barriers between them. We are all social distancing, and we are wearing masks as well. We'll also utilize the conference call or the conference line if it's needed during today's meeting. Yesterday, during the staff meeting, Dr. John Gallagher, our EMS director, provided the commissioners with an update on the EMS Office of the Medical Director consolidation, since it's been about a year since the two departments have consolidated. To learn more about that and where the department is going, please feel free to watch that meeting on our YouTube channel, on our Facebook page, or on our website, sedgewickcounty.org. Recently, Sedgwick County, we've got a bit of good news. Sedgwick County was awarded or honored with a Diversity and Inclusion Award through the Wichita Business Journal. And so I'd like to play a brief video here before we have Jeanette Livingston come up and talk about Project Search, which is our one initiative to encourage inclusiveness. So, one moment.
In December 2019, Sedgwick County implemented a new strategic plan. One of our distinctive goals of the strategic plan is diversity in the organization, to ensure our employees' policies and programs promote diversity and inclusion to reflect the community we serve. One program that Sedgwick County is very proud of, which promotes inclusiveness and advocacy in the organization, is Project Search. It is a program that enables young adults with disabilities to gain and maintain employment through training and career exploration during a one-year rotational internship. The ultimate goal for each student participant is competitive employment and accepting a job offer wherever a good match is found in any industry. Project Search has proven successful, with over 70% of graduates attaining employment.
Good morning, Jeanette.
Good morning, commissioners. I want to thank you for your ongoing support of Project Search. We're actually in our seventh year of partnership with USD 259. It's a program whose goal is for students to gain successful employment upon graduation. These are students with intellectual and developmental disabilities in their final year of school. And Sedgwick County has benefited tremendously from the program, not only meeting and learning about individuals with disabilities and breaking down some misperceptions, but also we found a number of good employees through this program. So, we're super excited, and I want to thank the commissioners for supporting the program. I also would like to appreciate the departments and supervisors that have provided such great internship opportunities to allow the students to develop new skills and abilities, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Any comments, questions from the commission? Okay. Jeanette, on behalf of the commissioners, congratulations again, and we're happy and very proud of what you do. So, very good. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. All right.
Additionally, if you're the parent or guardian of a student here in Sedgwick County, the Health Department will have another back-to-school vaccination clinic this Saturday from 8:00 AM to noon at their main clinic on West Central. No appointment is necessary for this clinic, but if you're not able to attend this clinic, we do have other opportunities available to get students vaccinated for this school year. Those dates, times, and locations are available on Sedgwick County's website, also on our social media platforms. As a reminder, county offices will be closed on Monday for Columbus Day, with the exception of public safety and the Health Department. Emergency services can be acquired by dialing or texting 911, and you can still schedule your no-cost COVID-19 test through the Health Department by dialing 211, United Way of the Plains. The Health Department's drive-through site will still be in operation, and they will still be taking samples on Monday. On the agenda, commissioners, we have several meeting minutes, two proclamations, appointments to various advisory boards, we've got an item related to general obligation bonds, one item related to a resolution about being an urban county, and then we've got a discussion related to the CARES Act. So, Chairman, without further ado, I'll let you have the meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Kate, and good morning, everybody. Thank you, commissioners, for your presence again. Welcome to the Board of Sedgwick County Commission meeting on Wednesday, October 7th. Madam Clerk, please call the order.
Incursion. To be observed by a moment of silence, please remain standing for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Present.
Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Present.
Chairman Meisner?
Present.
Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, you've received some email copies of the public agenda items that were sent to us. We can entertain a motion to receive and file unless there's any questions. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have reviewed the written comments that we received, and I think we need a little staff action on a couple of them. One of them received through our website says, "Why does Sedgwick County dropping Allwell Insurance? I don't have any knowledge of that. Don't know anything about it." So, if staff could follow up to answer the question that we received there.
Okay.
The second one that we received by public comment that I think we need staff to follow up on is we received comments that were written in Spanish, and the subject is mental problems. And the comment was, and again, both of these were in Spanish, I translated them for when I have my appointment, so I don't know if someone's having some kind of mental issue that need to be involved in, but I'd like staff to follow up on both those with those two comments unless someone else has something they saw. I move to receive and file the public comments received by email and online.
Okay. Thank you for pointing those out. I'll second the motion with the advice that these two emails will be addressed by staff. So, okay, motion and a second. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meisner?
Aye.
Okay, now we go into the public comment where they address the commission. Again, we've adopted a policy or we made a statement that we will allow face-to-face up to nine people, up to five minutes, and then anything after that out of the extension office at the end of the meeting. We understand that there's been no other people signed up other than these first nine, so we will allow them to address us here at the commission meeting. So, first up is Andrew Crane. Morning, Andrew. You have five minutes to address us. Thank you.
All right. Not a problem. I am here today to talk to you guys. There is a guiding pause is going to be doing some legislation on blind individuals with guide dogs. Missouri's already done theirs. Kansas hasn't done theirs yet, and I'm going to be in January, when the session starts, going to be up there in Topeka, talking to Dan Hawkins's office and getting the bill written. And I already have Commissioner David Dennis on board. And then the other thing that I wanted to talk to you guys today about is another bill that Ron Esses hasn't signed on to, and that is HR. And you'll get a packet, and it's the bottom one, and it's bill number HR 4686, and it is the Sammy's Law. And we would like all commissioners and city officials to contact Ron Esses's office and help out the National Federation of the Blind here in Kansas. We are urging you guys to call Ron Esses's office. And this bill is going to help out a lot of blind people and that. So, and also inviting you guys to the press conference for IRA, and there is going to be a representative from IRA that's going to be coming down to be a part of that press conference. So, I would really encourage you guys to come out. It's going to be an awesome event and an awesome press conference. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Andrew.
Not a problem.
Good luck with everything. I don't see any questions. Appreciate it. Next up is Katie Marshall.
Commissioner, the next person, Katie, is going to be a call-in.
Okay. For the public, the next public speaker is Katie Marshall. She's by speakerphone, addressing the commission.
Katie, are you there?
Katie, are you on the line?
Tony, we could go to the next one while you try to figure Katie out. You want to do that?
Give me a second.
Commission, there's a motion to give her a second. Is that all right? Okay. Okay, a second, a second. Yes, sir. Okay, next up, Steve Coller. Steve, welcome to the commission meeting. You have five minutes to address the commission.
Thank you. I'm probably going to use every moment of it, so I'm here to talk to you today about a subject I'm sure you've already heard about, and that's restriction of personal freedoms and individual constitutional liberties. But I was going to try to take a different tack at it, and unfortunately, it consumes a lot of time, but I was going to take a facetious parity approach and talk to you about stop signs and traffic signals and turn signals, traffic signs in general, requirement to wear seat belts, shoulder harnesses, the need to use turn indicators, making sure you have functional turn indicators and brake lights, and the number of things that I encountered just on my trip here in terms of traffic signals and essentially how ridiculous these rules are and how they need to be abolished, because not only are they a nuisance and an annoyance, but they also carry fines and penalties. And I was going to use that approach to try to capture your attention and hold it during my talk here. Unfortunately, it takes too much time, but these things all come under the heading of what we've grown up to know as the rules of the road, and we've been taught to obey them. And there's arguments that I figured you would try to present to me about why it's necessary to have these things, such as public safety and community well-being, state, city, county levels, social responsibility and the individual's role in social responsibility, and essentially the general public welfare, which you, as part of government, are charged to protect and provide for, which is consistent with the Constitution. And then I was going to point out that the real reason why I'm here is to talk about face masks, and that the same rules, or excuse me, same arguments that apply to the rules of the road also can be applied to face masks in a very common-sense fashion. They do provide for public safety. They do enhance the community well-being. They do address social responsibility and the individual's role in that social responsibility, and it provides for and protects the general public welfare. But yet, there's a big difference between the rules of the road and wearing face masks, and that is that in regard to the rules of the road, there is a consistent application of those laws across all levels of government, and that there are a system of deterrence applied in the form of fines and penalties, and we all accept this as being a natural practice. Yet, we don't see those things necessarily as applicable to face masks. So, I was going to dispense with all of that, which I haven't really done, and talk to you about the direction that you're taking and that I agree with it. Commissioner Howell had spoken a couple of weeks ago about leveling the playing field and correcting economic disincentives, which I think is a very good motive, but myself, I don't really frequent bars, so it doesn't really do a lot for me as an individual, but I do go to grocery stores, I do go to pharmacies, home improvement stores, other retail outlets, and doctors' offices, and I have to admit, I see a lot of people there, the vast majority that wear masks and act responsibly, but there's always the one or the two that don't have one on. And I've been known to confront those people because I have a personal interest, and I ask them why they don't wear a mask, and very often, the response is, "What business is it of yours?" Well, it is my business, and I have a reason why, and I'll explain it in just a minute. But I also talk to store managers, and they explain to me about corporate policies and how that's inconsistent with the mask mandate, therefore, they don't enforce it, and I just feel like those are weak excuses, and especially when you're talking about lives in particular. So, what's my reason? Well, I'm over 60, I have high blood pressure, I have type 2 diabetes, and I have stage IV cancer. And if I get exposed to COVID, I'm likely to go into the ICU and die, and I explain this to people, and I ask them, "Don't you care about my life?" And in a lot of instances, I don't get a response at all. They just choose not to talk about it, which is their privilege, but I have to point out to you, and I'm sure you've tumbled to it by now, how many people do you know that have just one of those conditions, not all four? How many people do you know that fall in the category of being overweight or obese, which also compromises the immune system? Thank you. I saw it. And so, when you stop to consider that, I don't know how you can't look at masks as being a simple, inefficient way of protecting lives. And I was going to ask you to do four things, and I'm not sure I got time for it, but first of all, I was going to encourage you to revisit the notion of a mask mandate. I know Commissioner Cruz supports it. I don't know about the other four of you. I think you're against it, but just when you use the same arguments that I used about rules of the road. That's my timer. I'm sorry, Madam.
Are you able to just quickly say your other three quickly, sir?
I'm sorry. What's that?
Can you just say your other three items real quickly?
Yes, I can.
You said four, just real quickly, though.
So, I was going to ask you to revisit the notion of the mask mandate.
Right. We got that.
I was going to ask you to institute deterrence in the form of fines and penalties, apply them not only to individuals but also to businesses, and I have a good reason for that, which I don't have time to go into, to actually direct law enforcement to police parking lots to watch the foot traffic going in and out of the business.
Okay. Your next ones, and then you can...
And then lastly, ask you to prepare for the grumbling and the griping that you're sure to hear about restrictions of personal freedoms and individual constitutional liberties. Thank you for the time. I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I don't see any questions. If you'd like, if you've got more detail that you want to share public with the, for the record, just make sure it gets either emailed to us or on file.
Okay. Thank you very much.
It'll be part of the record. Commissioner Cruz? Sir, you have a question?
Oh, I just want to say, Steve, I just want to say thank you for being here today, and I wish you well in your health challenges.
Thank you.
And hopefully, you are getting the care you need. So, I appreciate you risking, taking the time, you know, to come out here today. I just want to say that I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. I don't see any other questions. Appreciate it. We ready for Katie? Katie Marshall?
We're going to try it one more time.
Ms. Katie Marshall, are you on the phone? No, thank you.
Katie, are you on the line? Katie, can you hear us? Katie, can you hear us? Okay, Commissioner, I'm not sure that it's working, so let's move on to the next.
We'll go to the next one. Next up is Andrew Thingwell. Hey, Andrew.
Hello?
Yeah, Andrew, there you go. Just sit right there.
Hello?
We'll go back to Katie.
Hello? Is this... Okay.
Katie?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Katie, welcome to the commission meeting. You have five minutes to address the commission.
Okay. Thank you. I was planning to be there in person. I got all dressed up. I've got heels on. I did my hair and my makeup, and I was so excited, and I was going to start my speech off saying, "Isn't this so great that we are meeting in person and not behind a computer screen, but look what has happened? This is one of the saddest things I have ever seen in my entire life. I cannot get into the meeting because I'm not going to wear a mask, and I'm not going to wear a facelift, and that's exactly what I'm speaking of, and I can't go into the meeting, and I can't talk about it because they won't let me in. I tried medical exemption. Nothing is working. This is the sad state in the United States of America. And look, you know what I was going to talk about? I was going to talk about Anne Frank. I was going to talk about how the fact that 6 million Jews would not have had to die if people who could have done something would have done something when they should have done something, and you have the opportunity now to stop this complete takeover of a free country. You can stop it. You can do something. You may not be able to do everything, but you can do something. This is stupid that I'm sitting, I'm standing outside of a building as a taxpaying citizen, not allowed to approach my government in person because why? Because I won't cover my face when I'm not even sick? I'm not sick. I am not sick. I am perfectly healthy. I have no fever. You know, this just reminds me of, it makes me think of the Bible. I'm thinking of the Old Testament. You think social distancing is new? It's not new. It started back in the Old Testament when the lepers had to stay 50 paces away from people. They had to shout, "Unclean, unclean," and cover their faces, and they had to live in isolation. But then guess what happened? Jesus came. Jesus came, and the leper broke the barrier, and he fell at Jesus's feet. He crossed the social distancing line. He fell at his feet, and he said, "If you are willing, you can make me clean." And Jesus reached out his hand, and he touched him, and he said, "I am willing. Be clean." That's New Testament. So, do you want to live in Old Testament law where no sacrifice is good enough, or do you want to live in the New Testament when Christ's blood can cover our sins and we can have eternal life? You decide. What about the story when Jesus heals the blind man by making a mixture of blood with his saliva and dirt? That blind man would never have been able to see unless Jesus rubbed his saliva mixed with dirt on his face. Okay? What about the Pharisees who came after Jesus and his disciples, saying that they didn't wash their hands before they ate? And Jesus said, "It's not what's on the outside of a man that makes him clean, it's what's on the inside." So, what world do you want to live in? You know? I mean, I was just, I don't even know if I still have time, and it's hard for me to pull this up, but I was going to read you this portion of Anne Frank's diary. Anne Frank says this, "Our freedom was severely restricted by a series of anti-Jewish decrees. Jews were required to wear a yellow star. Jews were required to turn in their bicycles. Jews were forbidden to ride in cars. Jews were required to do their shopping between 3:00 and 5:00 PM. Jews were forbidden to be out on the streets between 8:00 and 6:00, 8:00 PM and 6:00 AM. Jews are forbidden to attend theaters, movies, or any other forms of entertainment. Jews were forbidden to visit Christians in their homes. Jews were required to attend Jewish schools, and you couldn't do this, and you couldn't do that." But life went on. Jackie always said to me, "I don't dare do anything anymore because I'm afraid it's not allowed." And I think we all know how Anne Frank's story ended. Her diary comes to an abrupt end, and so does her life, and that's all I have to say to you today.
Okay. Thank you, Katie Marshall. I don't see any questions, so appreciate your comments. Okay. Next up is Andrew Thingwell. Good morning, Andrew. You have five minutes to address the commission.
Thank you. Thank you for the time. I'm here today to ask you to reevaluate our county policies on COVID-19 quarantine and isolation of healthy schoolchildren. The current policy 1.722 requires healthy children who are within six feet of another student who tests positive to be excluded from school for 14 days. This policy has resulted in hundreds of healthy schoolchildren being excluded from school. The same student who works in any essential business or critical infrastructure, which according to the CDC includes restaurants, grocery stores, janitorial services, IT, or transportation, would not be quarantined for 14 days, but is allowed to work so long as they wear a mask and monitor for symptoms. So, under the current guidelines, a student who is a close contact at school must remain home for 14 days, while the same student who is a close contact in any essential business can continue to work if they wear a mask and do not have symptoms. The education of our children is as important as the profit gained by a local business under the exact same facts. Our schools are essential and critical, and we cannot maintain educational pursuits and the additionally essential social services our schools perform if we continue to exclude seven to 10 or more healthy children for every one COVID-19 case. Life is about balancing risks. We balance risk when we walk down the stairs, drive our cars, participate in activities, feed our children. We also balance risk when our children attend school, work, and play. Our community policy on the exclusion of close-contact schoolchildren is not balanced and does not take into account the risk the virus poses to children. Finally, I would encourage you to read the Great Barrington Declaration. It was drafted a few days ago by three health experts and has been co-signed by thousands more. The Great Barrington Declaration proposes a balanced approach to COVID response and public health, and I challenge you to consider it when you adopt policies for Sedgwick County. We willingly and smartly have taken time to slow down and understand the new virus, but we also must adapt as we learn more about the virus, its risks, and the benefits of various approaches. Our businesses should be open, our schools should be open, and we need to get back to the path to normal. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Thingwell. Appreciate your comments. Okay, next up is Monica Fukei Tyler. I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
Fukei Tyler.
Okay. I was close. Good morning, and thank you. You have five minutes to address the commission.
Okay, thank you. I want to ask you, did you go and have a meal with your spouse this weekend? Did you go to church with your family? Were you able to go shopping and visit a friend? These are all the things that we take for granted that the elderly population is being denied. My name is Monica, and I want to first start by saying I truly believe that healthcare workers have been doing a wonderful job. Nothing I have to say will in any way negatively reflect all the men and women that are providing excellent healthcare to all patients in a very difficult time. To help you better understand my point of view, I want to read to you the federal patient right laws. This portion of the law is the only real reason you need, the only real reason you need to reinstate visitation in all care homes and hospitals. Section F3, a resident has the right to interact with members of the community and participate in community activities both inside and outside the facility. F4, the resident has the right to receive visitors of his or her choosing at the time of his or her choosing, subject to the resident's right to deny visitation when applicable, and in a manner that does not impose on the rights of other residents. The patient right laws are put in place to protect patients from neglect and abuse and to ensure that patients' quality of life. I encourage you to read the patient right laws documents in its entirety. The restriction of visitors, outings, and community events is in violations of the patient's rights. Any other time in history, if a patient was isolated in a room, denied visitation, and denied the ability to leave the facility without threat of isolation, legal action would have been taken, and it would have been considered abuse. I think it's important for all of you to get perspective from a family member dealing with this from day in and day out to better understand the effects of the aging, on the aging adult. I am also a healthcare worker, and I have many years' experience in the long-term care facilities. With that said, let's start where... With that said, let's start where, let's start with saying how things were in February 2020. I would visit my uncle daily or almost daily. Uh, every Sunday I would pick him up after church, and we would go to the movies, or to the lake, or go shopping, or whatever he wanted to do. Um, we would plan crafts and holiday activities, uh, we would play cards and games, and then he would even go to all of my daughter's school functions and plays. Since March, I have only seen him at the nursing homes convenience. Again, I'm going to say it's not the fault of the healthcare workers, they're following the guidelines set down by state and federal agencies, but the visits have decreased to two or three times a month or less. Nursing homes are offering scheduled visitations outside supervised by nurses, denying the patient's right to private visits. Visitations over the phone which, in which the patient cannot understand the speaker and often does not know who's on the other end of the line. The, the available times to visit a resident have been restricted to certain times of days when the nursing staff is available and it's not mealtime. Not only do these restrictions affect visitors, but they take a mental and physical toll on the patient. Before March, my uncle had been hospitalized twice in seven years. Since March, he has been hospitalized four times in seven months. I ask, uh, he asks every day, or all the time when I come, he asks, "When can I leave?" And he doesn't think this nursing home thing's a good idea. He asks me why I don't come every day. He asks me, he begs me to take him for a drive. My visits and our outings are detrimental to both his physical and mental health. Now that you know where I come from, I also understand the need to protect the aging population, but I believe we can do this and allow visitations and outings. By using protective procedures already in place by healthcare workers, we have, we can accomplish adequate protection for both the visitors and the patients. Fresh air, walks, and outings are also a vital part of staying healthy. So I beg you to read the patient right laws in their full, in full, because regardless of the scenario in which each nursing home chooses to keep their residents safe, it's important that visits are unlimited, available at any time, and private. It is the patient's right to choose. They have the right to choose who comes, when they come, where they visit. They have the right to go to church and have spiritual counsel. They have the right to have a medical advocate present for doctor's appointments, hospitalizations, and while receiving nursing care. They have the right to do all these things without fear of being isolated. I urge you to take a minute to consideration, to consider the effect of the restrictions on the aging population and to issue an opinion that reinstates visitation for people who are living out their days isolated in care homes. And I didn't add this, but I'm going to now, just to think about, um, I don't know, I guess, all of the people that are able to come in to the nursing homes and see the loved ones that we're restricted from are also carrying in the virus and infecting them anyway. Because my uncle is currently hospitalized for COVID-19, and he has been restricted and in isolation for more than a month and a half. Because every time he's close to getting off of isolation, he gets pneumonia and he's sent back. Because he hasn't been able to be outside, he hasn't been able to see anybody he cares about, he's in his room for everything, including going to the bathroom, in the middle of his room, because he can't get into the bathroom because of the mechanical lift. So he's inside his room, and a porta potty is brought in for him to go potty and to defecate, and then it's removed. I mean, so you think about, even though it's been a month and a half and he has been isolated, he's still infected. So, anyway, I thank you for your time, and I appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Monica. Good luck to you, and sorry for you and your, and your uncles. So, best wishes for yourself.
It's everybody, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any questions. Next up is Tanya Hudson. Good morning, Tanya. Welcome to the commission. You have five minutes to address the county.
Thank you. Over the past several months, the county commission has received thousands of calls, emails, public comments, public agenda speakers. But for some reason, the majority of the commissioners refuses to let its constituents make their own health decisions, despite overwhelming, statistically sound, scientifically based information that's been provided to you. Your arbitrary lockdown actions, such as masks, capacity limits, and limiting operating hours, have spooked employees, employers, businesses, schools, churches, and neighborhoods. They've divided a once-stable community and caused harm to businesses and individuals in countless ways. My financial stability, as well as the lives of many others here locally, has been directly harmed by these arbitrary actions. And respectfully, it's time for new leadership. I am announcing today my candidacy for District 3 as a write-in. And my platform is to return power to the constituents. You were not elected to listen to one county employee, rather to listen to your constituents. And this November 3rd, the voters in District 3 will have a choice. Freedom or more lockstep draconian measures? So if you value your freedom, vote Tanya Hudson as a write-in candidate for District 3 County Commissioner. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tanya. I don't see any questions. Appreciate, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Daniel Rivera. Good morning, Daniel.
Good morning.
Do you have five minutes to address this?
Excellent. Um, I did tag a few of you in a Facebook post yesterday, so hopefully you got a chance to look at it. I'm not friends with all of you on social media, so I didn't do it for all of you. But I will just share those numbers with you very quickly here, and I am to speak with the mandates that we currently have in place. And, um, so we have 16 counties that have had a mandate since essentially July area, beginning, beginning of July. So from June 29th to October 5th, uh, those counties have had a 485% increase of COVID cases. The 89 counties without have had a 208% increase. Uh, those with mandates increased cases per thousand by 18% higher than those without. Cedric County specifically went from 892 cases to 9,509, a 655% increase compared to 208% increase in those counties that were unmasked. Uh, when we look at per 100,000, it was a 7% increase with Cedric County over those that were unmasked. Um, the Sentinel is who published this, and they reached out to Mayor Whipple, as well as the Wichita superintendent, and received no response. I believe the KDHE individual here locally did reach out and said that masks are working contrary to what the stats have shown there. Um, 75-plus years of age has had 5% of the cases. Unfortunately, 25% of those have been hospitalized of all the cases combined, and then 50% of the deaths have come from that age range. South Dakota didn't really do much of a lockdown. They did recommendations to their people and advised them to do what they should do when the disease hits. And, um, pound for pound, they've been very similar in the results that we've got in the state of Kansas, and you can do your own research on that. Zero to 17 years of age with this disease here in Kansas, 2% have been hospitalized. We have had zero mortal situations. Thank God for that. So I come to you to just share with you those statistics, and, um, the back of my shirt says "facts over experts." And that's essentially where I land. I've been looking at these numbers, I've been looking at the stats, and they speak for themselves. And I think we've seen enough, and I, I really am really concerned about our schools right now. I've been getting a lot of feedback, and my question is, how many of you have sat in a classroom throughout an entire day and shadowed a student to see what they actually go through, day in and day out? Uh, we, we heard from, um, a, a parent at the Derby Board Meeting last week, talking about her son being sent home and being there all alone, and, uh, really what it was doing to him mentally. And I think we have to really take into consideration what this is doing to our youth that really the virus has very minimal impact on. And we're trying to protect the older generations from the younger generation, and my question for you is, when has that ever been the case? Why are we doing such a thing? The individual that spoke before me, Steve, uh, talked about, you know, him being protected with the mask, and I would reference him to KMUW. They did a live on Facebook on March 10th, and I encourage all of you to take a look at it. And Kaylee Hervey from the KDHE, she's the epidemiologist for us, she said that she doesn't think that the CDC will really do anything with masks. She said, "I really don't, I really don't, um, suggest a lot of, of protection for the general public, and I really don't think the CDC is gonna do much from that stance. I don't think they're gonna move in this direction." And she said, "Really, the masks that, you know, have been mandated and people are wearing aren't really that effective." Margaret Hagan, an MD with infectious disease consultants, she said, quote, I quote her here, "They are a false sense of security." The individual that was here just a bit ago that has those comorbidities, that's wearing that surgical mask, it's a false sense of security. He's not protected enough in this room with these individuals that are in here right now with the comorbidities that he has. And unfortunately, that is the case. We have put people in a false sense of security space. And the truth is, he can mitigate, regardless of how I show up, regardless of how infectious I am, he can show up in a way with PPE right now that's available in America to mitigate 100% from him getting infected. That's possible. And that's his responsibility, and it's not mine. And to put that responsibility on our youth, to expect them to show up in a way where there's really zero risk for them to prevent something happening to an individual like Steve, and I would, I would, I would, I would recommend you go ask individuals, go ask the grandparents that we're protecting, what would you rather have for your grandchild? Do we take away our lives, the livelihood of our youth so that we can prevent death? Right? It's inevitable. It's inevitable. Are we, what is the end game? And that's where, that's where I'm gonna end here, is what is our end game? We have to have an end game. Where, where are we, where are we headed? What is, what is, what is it that we're trying to accomplish? Are we trying to eliminate a virus from spreading? Are we trying to eliminate a virus from killing individuals? Because that's essentially what I'm hearing. Where is the end game? We need an end game. And I'll tell you, I'm leading a group right now, and there's a lot of people asking a lot of questions. I'm trying to give them answers, I'm trying to find those answers, and I'm just gonna encourage you in leadership, there's two teams you can be on. There's the team of fear, and there's the team of faith. There's the team of courage, and there's the team of cowardice. There's the team that moves forward, and there's the team that moves in failure, which is currently where we're headed, unfortunately. We need to move faster, we need to make some decisions, we gotta take action. And I really encourage you and implore you to do that, and be bold, be courageous, and be on one of those teams. You can't be in the middle, there's no middle ground on this game.
Okay, Mr. Rivera.
Thank you.
Thank you.
God bless.
Thank, I don't see any comments. Okay, next up is Karen Bruet.
Brulette?
Sorry, thank you. Karen Brulette. Karen, I apologize for mispronouncing your name.
Oh, Brulette, Brulette is it.
Thank you for, thank you for being at the commission, and you have five minutes to address.
Okay. Get my song together a minute. Uh, my name is Karen Brulette, and I'm speaking to you today on therapeutics for COVID. Um, it concerns me that we have so many restrictions and regulations being placed on us right now out of the fear of dying from COVID. It is real, it does happen, but it's happening such a small amount now. It isn't anything the way it started at the beginning of the pandemic when we were all afraid. There's information on the effectiveness of some common drugs and supplements like the ones that President Trump and many others, including myself, are taking. Everyone is so afraid of COVID, but if you understand that there's things you can do, you don't have to be so afraid. I want to give you hope and the knowledge to prepare a safer plan for yourself and others. And I'm glad Mr. Schultz is doing well, and the others here, I hope. Um, when Mr., when President Trump came down with COVID, according to reports, he was noted as taking a regimen of five over-the-counter items to slow down any infection from the virus. Those items are zinc, vitamin D, Pepsid, melatonin, and daily aspirin, things anybody can buy at the store, and there are documented evidence from many trials or studies that they do help. Um, he then began taking Regeneron, an antibody cocktail that is similar in nature to our own antibodies that fight off virus. This company is not little, it's conducting one of the largest genetic sequencing efforts in the world. At the hospital, they began to treat him with intravenous antiviral remdesivir. The FDA has issued some authorization for its use. Typically given to patients with Ebola, it works by hindering the virus replication in the body. In May of this year, um, I read that Dr. Thomas Moore was using it here in Wichita, but they only had enough for 50 people and were using it, or patients, and were saving it for women and those who are pregnant and children. I would like to think it's more readily available now. They also added the steroid dexamethasone, which is used to fight inflammation. We all know that. Other antimalarial type drugs like ivermectin, ivermectin and hydrochloroquine are being used in many countries and by many doctors. In some countries, their rates of COVID are extremely low because the people can buy hydrochloroquine over the counter in the stores. It's a known antifungal or antiviral drug, and it does work for many people, but for some reason, we can't get it here. About two weeks ago, I heard, I take that back, private doctors, some can give it. But it's ridiculous how it's being fought. About two weeks ago, I heard Dr. Marty Markey from John Hopkins University say on a nose program that with less aggressive ventilator management, anticoagulation, remdesivir, dexamethasone, convalescent plasma, we're seeing our death rate go down. And I think therapeutics right now are on a race to beat out vaccines, and I think they're going to come out before the vaccines. We're seeing that now in clinical studies and other studies all over the world. America doesn't want to listen. Well, they're here and they're being used, but drugs can take five years to receive FDA approval, so although they're being routinely used with great success, no federal or state program here will cite them as effective method of treatment, and we are left in the bowels of isolation. Melatonin has not only been shown to help you sleep and important for healing rest, but it's also a potent anti-inflammatory for the lungs and has several other good things. Researchers from Spain reported that hospitalized patients with low blood levels of zinc tended far worse than those with healthier levels. Lower levels reflected higher inflammation. The same with vitamin D. Simple solutions if people would just be educated and know to take them. In regards to vitamin D, I read an article about discovering a phenomenon of a brachykin and hypo, hypoth, hypothesis causing death. It's much, they study this, it's much like the cytokine storm that we've all heard about happening with COVID. It stated this summer, the soup, the Summit Supercomputer in Tennessee about, set about crunching data on more than 40,000 genes from 17,000 genetic samples in an effort to better understand COVID-19. Summit is the second fastest computer in the world, but in the process, which involved analyzing billions of genetic combinations, it actually took more than a week. They cited 10-plus potential treatments for this reaction to COVID, many of which were already FDA-approved, but these especially interesting comments I found were on vitamin D. The team suggested vitamin D as a potentially useful COVID-type teen drug and said it could stop potentially deadly bradyocannon storms from forming. They acknowledged that the vitamin D had already been shown to help those with COVID and that around 20% of our population is deficient. It's also known that the number is often higher in the elderly and may be the reason that so many older people are falling victim to the, to the virus.
Karen.
We just have to get them some vitamin D.
Okay. Karen, so your time's up, so can you wrap it up, please? It's, the beep went off.
Okay. Yeah, I've just got a couple more. Um, Dr. Fauci also takes vitamin D and C and exercise and rest. Um, so a lot, a lot of big-name companies, big-name doctors all over the world are studying this and alternative ways of helping us get well. Secondly, if I could just mention real quick...
Karen, okay, please, real quick, you need to...
Okay, yeah, and I, I promise.
Okay, please.
I just want to tell you what I'm hearing from people about their, their kids. The kids who come from families that are stable families, well, well-disciplined, a good, you know, the good tuggable home, they're not having any trouble. But a lot of single parents who don't have help, but especially kids with special needs who depend on their school to give those special aids to their kids, they're not gonna make it through the year. They can't get their homework done, they can't do their schoolwork. They lost half their year last year, they're gonna miss all this la, this year. If they pass them, it's gonna be a detriment to them. If they fail them, it's gonna be a detriment to them. They need to get back to school in a teaching environment that they can learn.
Okay. Thank you, Karen. I don't see any questions. There, there's no questions. Thank you. Okay. Have a good day. Uh, next up is Patrick Davidson. Good morning, Patrick. Welcome to the commission. You have five minutes to address us.
Thank you. So I just want to start by saying, I wish you guys would listen to us. For every one of us that comes and addresses you, there's thousands and thousands of others behind us. Commissioner Howell, thank you, sir, for all you've done protecting my children. Commissioner Howell, thank you, sir, for all you've done protecting my children, children's future. The rest of you communists, I would like to tell you that I was born and raised Wichita, Kansas, lived here most of my life, left for the military, and decided to move back. Sometimes I question that. I've moved my family out of Sedgwick County. I, unfortunately, I still work in Sedgwick County. I also own a small business, and I'm not servicing Sedgwick County anymore because you refuse to listen to us, with the exception of Commissioner Howell. I employ everyone listening today to do the same. Don't support Sedgwick County unless you stop this communism right away. I've lost three friends this year to suicide because they've lost their jobs, they had to move back in with their parents, and they felt like they had nothing else, no other option. And the four of you who continue this, their deaths are on you. Every business that's shut down since February, I drive down, drive into work, see businesses shut down, small businesses shut down. Yet Walmart, Amazon, all the big companies, all, all the big companies that are paying these communists, you guys, to do this, get flourish while, while the individuals, the Americans, suffer. And that is on you. It's sad. Please, keep in mind what I said earlier. For each one of us to come and address you, there's thousands more. I took the day off work today because I'm interviewing to get out of Sedgwick County because of this madness. I don't ever want to come back to Sedgwick County because of this madness, because of what you guys are perpetuating. It's pathetic. People are dying, businesses, families are being ruined and torn apart because of the actions you're taking. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, sir. Okay, see no other questions? Motion to receive and file a public comment. Second, any other questions? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes, item A, regular meeting minutes of September 2nd, 2020.
Commissioners, if it's all right with you all, I'd like to combine A, B, and C, which is minutes of the regular meeting of September 2nd, the regular meeting of September 9th, and the regular meeting of September 16th. Been motioned and seconded to move to approve all three dates, minutes. I don't see any other questions or corrections, so Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Proclamations, item D, proclamation declaring National Arts and Humanities Month.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Whereas the arts and humanities play a unique role in the lives of our families, our communities, and our country by embodying much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect, and imagination of humankind, and enhancing and enriching the lives of every American. And whereas cities and states, through their local and state art agencies and representing thousands of cultural organizations, have celebrated the value and importance of culture in the lives of Americans and the health of thriving communities during arts, National Arts and Humanities Months for several years. And whereas the humanities help diverse communities across the United States explore their history and culture with the support and partnership of the National Endowment for the Humanities, the 55 state and territorial humanities councils, and local education and cultural institutions. And whereas the arts and culture industry also strengthens our economy by generating 166.3 billion in total economic activity annually, 26 billion in government revenue, and by supporting the full-time equivalent of 5 million jobs. And whereas the creative economy drives tourism and commerce, supports American workers, and makes up 4.3% of the annual GDP. And proposed federal regulation titled the CREATE Act would support economic development and the creative economy. Now, therefore be it resolved that I, Lacey Cruz, on behalf of Chairman Peter F. Meitzner and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim October 2020 as National Arts and Humanities Month, and call upon our citizens to celebrate and support, support the arts and promote the arts and culture in our nation, and to specifically encourage the greater participation by those said citizens in taking action for the arts and humanities in their towns and cities. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the proclamation.
I'll second that. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries. I understand somebody's here to accept this.
Today, my friends and colleagues, Sean Chastain and Shannon Boone, are here to accept the proclamation.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioner Cruz, and good morning, everyone. As mentioned, Shannon Boone, Arts Council Secretary, and I are here on behalf of Wichita's Arts Council, who is joining thousands of arts organizations and communities across the nation to celebrate National Arts and Humanities Month throughout October. We are grateful for today's proclamation that honors the efforts of artists, historians, teachers, students, and cultural groups working to make the arts and humanities a part of everyone's life here in Sedgwick County and across our nation. "The arts sector continues to suffer devastating losses due to COVID-19 pandemic, so it is vital that we support our creative workers and fight for this sector in the months and years to come," says Robert Lynch, President and CEO of Americans for the Arts and National Coordinator of Arts and Humanities Month. "National Arts and Humanities Month gives us the chance to celebrate the value that arts impacts in our lives, and it is more important than ever for everyone to take part to recognize the creative and cultural value of the arts and humanities in our communities." Since 1999, the Arts Council, which is housed at City Arts, has worked to achieve its mission of advancing and promoting arts and culture in the Wichita community through education, advocacy, and outreach. The Arts Council slogan, "We Make Art Happen," reinforces the group's commitment to the business side of the arts and spreading the words that arts and culture is a 94.7 million industry, $94.7 million industry in Wichita, and that supports over 2,800 jobs and generates 9.5 million in local and state government revenue. WichitaArts.com was created by the Arts Council to be a place where everyone can learn about the scope and value of arts in the Wichita community. So whether you're an elected official or civic employee, citizen, patron, resident, visitor, Shannon and I invite you to enjoy the arts virtually, on your own, or with the people you love. Play with clay, draw, make music with your kids at home. And speaking of kids, as Executive Coordinator of Fine Arts for the Wichita Public Schools, I've seen firsthand how arts can transform the lives of our students, and we are grateful for the support of government entities as yourselves, and of course, our county boards of education. Other ideas? Watch a documentary on a favorite artist, or visit a digital exhibit online. Sing, dance, act, read a book, or paint with friends. Lots of activities are easy to do together over virtual platforms like Zoom, Facebook, watch parties, or other arts-friendly apps. As longtime Coroll conductor Robert Shaw stated, "The arts, not a privilege of a few, but the necessity of us all." Thanks for having us today.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good morning, Shannon. Thanks for being here. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item E, proclamation declaring Rocktober.
Okay, Commissioners, we have one more proclamation. I will read it. Whereas experts agree, I might comment that year 2020 must be the year of experts. Anyway, experts agree that physical activity is one of the most important things Americans can do to improve their health. And the World Health Organization, the Center for Disease Control, the American Heart Association, and others recommended, recommend youth get 60 minutes of physical activity each day, and adults get 150 minutes of physical activity each week. And whereas BikeWalk Wichita has deemed the month of October as Walktober, and is designed for everyone, from inactive individuals to those already making great strides towards better health. Anyone can step it up and be successful with this cool-weather walking program. And whereas walking is a great way to get the physical activity needed to obtain health benefits, walking does not require any special skills, nor does it require a gym membership or expensive equipment. And whereas walking is the simplest positive change you can make to effectively, effectively improve your heart health, and can also help maintain a healthy body, weight, and reduce the risk of chronic diseases and stress-related illnesses. And whereas BikeWalk Wichita, in collaboration with the Health and Wellness Coalition of Wichita and other organizations, are challenging residents to join one of two weekly group walks, take a walking tour using the BikeWalk Wichita app, or lead a walking group in your neighborhood, and submitting that to www.bikewalkwichita, that's all one word, bikewalkwichita.org/walktober. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Chairman Peter F. Meitzner and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim October 2020 as Walktober Month. In Sedgwick County, encourage citizens to add walking as part of their daily routine today, October 7th, 2020. Commissioners, I make a motion that we approve this proclamation.
Second.
Been motioned in a second. Being no comments, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. And I understand Shelley Rich and Kim Newfield are here to accept the proclamation. Good morning.
Thank you, Chairman Meitzner, and members of the Board of Health. I facilitate the Health and Wellness Coalition, which promotes physical activity and good nutrition in our community. I'm accepting this proclamation on behalf of BikeWalk Wichita, a leader in the community that is working towards transforming Wichita into a more livable, accessible, connected city, making biking and walking safe, equitable, and appealing. Walktober has been celebrated in our community for many years, originally started by the Sedgwick County Health Department Health Promotion Program. Now more than ever, during these challenging times, we want you to make this simple, positive change to improve your heart health, reduce the risk of chronic disease, and improve your mental health. So whether with a friend, a family member, coworker, neighbor, or pet, we encourage you to make walking a priority in October and beyond. Again, thank you for this opportunity to accept the proclamation. I hope each of you will go to BikeWalkWichita.org and attend a group walk or lead a walk of your own.
Okay, thank you. Great idea with the website. Commissioner Dennis has a question, comment?
Well, thanks for being here. I'm a member of the Health and Wellness Coalition, and I appreciate what you do for our community to keep us healthy. Thanks again for being here today.
Thank you for serving on the leadership team. We appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. No other questions or comments? Thank you again. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments, item F, accept the resignation of Haley Cotler from the Sedgwick County Animal Care Advisory Board.
Mr. Papun.
Mr. Chairman, Mike Papun, County Counselor. You have before you the resignation of Haley Cotler, one of Commissioner Cruz's appointments to the Animal Care Advisory Board for personal reasons. She doesn't believe she can continue to serve on this board. We'd ask that you accept the resignation.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz? Sorry.
Thank you, Chairman. I want to first thank you, say thank you to Haley for her service, and I will make a motion, we accept the resignation.
Second. Been motioned a second to accept the resignation. No other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item G, resolution appointing Zach Dare in the student position of the Third District Citizen Advisory Board.
Mr. Papun.
Mr. Chairman, Mike Papun, County, County Counselor. As you remember, last February, I believe, we amended this resolution to allow a high school student to be on the Third District Citizens Advisory Board. We have a resolution for you today appointing Zach Dare to this board, and ask that you approve this resolution, it's proper form.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. And I appreciate Zach Dare volunteering to serve on the community, this, on our Citizens Advisory Board. This is a position that we created here recently, and Zach is an interesting individual. He's a senior at Northwest High School. He's number 90 on the football team, undefeated football team, I might add. And he wants to go to West Point, the military academy, upon graduation. So he is just an all-around excellent individual. I am very proud that he has volunteered to serve. He can't be here today because he's a senior in high school, and he is pursuing his studies so that he can advance in life. So I make the motion that we appoint Zach Dare to my Citizens Advisory Board. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, there been a motion a second for his approval? No other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item H, resolution appointing Maria Gonzalez to the Sedgwick County Fourth District Citizens Advisory Board.
Mr. Papun.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mike Papun, County Counselor. I think we can take items H, I, and J all together if it's the will of the board. All of, three of these items are appointments to Commissioner Cruz's Fourth District Citizens Advisory Board. The resolutions that have been prepared recommend Maria Gonzalez to be appointed to this board, Robert Simon, and Debbie Grover. The resolutions are all in proper form, and ask the adopter resolutions.
Okay, Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. I would like to first say that I'm excited to have Maria, Robert, and Deb, who have elected to serve on this board. I think adding new voices is always a great opportunity to see the world from a different view. So I'd like to make a, a motion that we appoint all three of these individuals and take items H, I, and J all in one.
Second. Been a motion in a second to approve the appointees as presented. No other comment. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please, Madam Clerk.
New Business, item K, a resolution authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation refunding and improvement bonds, Series A, 2020 of Sedgwick County, Kansas.
Ms. Lindsey Poe Rousseau, welcome to the meeting.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Good job on the name. Yes, Lindsey Poe Rousseau, your CFO. So the item before you this morning is a resolution that, bottom line, authorizes us to proceed with a bond sale. So it would authorize us to work with our bond counsel, Gilmore and Bell, of whom Garth Herman, a member of that team, is here, and we're grateful for his help, along with our municipal advisor, Baker Tilly, to prepare for a bond sale and hold that competitive sale on October 20th, and then we would bring that to you for approval on Wednesday, October 21st. The sale would fund three types of projects. First would be bid, bridge projects. As you likely recall, in your 2020 CIP, you approved the construction of four bridges across five projects to be funded with proceeds of a bond sale, in actuality totaling 2.8 million, including issuance costs. This would be repaid over a period of 20 years, and estimated annual average debt service would be 159,000 per year. The second type of project would fund street improvements related to the campus complex addition, including storm sewer, drainage ditch, and sidewalk reconstruction, to be paid with a collection of special assessments over 15 years. The assessment portion is at $475,000, including issuance costs, and so estimated average annual debt service would be about $35,000 per year. annual debt service would be about $35,000 per year. And you actually have an item on your consent agenda related to this. Finally, this action would refund 2010 Build America bonds, which were taxable, general obligation bonds essentially, meaning that any income was taxable for those folks who bought those. The total to be refunded is $1.66 million for the road and bridge portion of that work. By refunding, we estimate we'll save about $192,000 in terms of present value dollars. So the estimated average annual debt service would be about $200,000 per year on that for the remaining 10 years of that term. So this financing action is estimated to add $4.965 million to the county's balance of outstanding general obligation debt, increasing the total to about $50.1 million by year end. Again, the bridge projects would be structured to be repaid over 20 years, and those repayments would be structured to comply with our debt policy, so that 30% of that principal would be repaid in the first five years and 60% in the first 10 years. The street improvements, as I said, would be repaid over 15 years, and the refunding payments would occur over that remaining 20-year structure. Now, as you know, the county's debt policy does include a number of ratios. Those are included in your backup, and you can see how this debt would influence those benchmarks. We are well within policy limits to issue this. I'm happy to answer any specific questions you may have on that. But if you don't, I would recommend that you authorize the resolution, and either Garth or I will be more than happy to answer any questions you might have if you have them.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation and explanation. Looks to be in order for me. I don't see any other comments. I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Been a motion and a second, being no other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item L, a charter resolution exempting Sedgwick County, Kansas, from the provisions of KSA 19-15-108, and providing substitute and additional provisions on the same subject relating to buildings, parking, and improvements for urban area counties and the issuance of bonds to pay the cost therefore in repealing Charter Resolution Number 56.
Okay. Lindsey, you're still up.
Yes, I am, and I'm still your CFO. For now. We'll see how this goes, right? So this item that we're talking about right now is a charter resolution. So what is important to note at the very beginning of this discussion is that it will require a supermajority vote, at least four commissioners, to approve this action today. So as you heard in that lengthy title that the poor clerk had to read off, we have a charter in place right now, Charter 56, that authorizes us to do essentially general obligation bonds, to do county facility work within three blocks of this building, essentially on the courthouse complex. Now, when the county reached its urban designation, the statute that we had that charter authorized under made it necessary to either change the charter or operate without a charter. And so what the recommendation is today is to repeal Charter 56 and replace it with a charter that essentially serves the same function. We can still do county facility work. It's just that there's no longer that three-block radius that we need to be concerned with. So essentially, the language says the board would be authorized to acquire sites for county buildings, structures, and related parking, or for additional parking or additions related to existing county buildings or structures, and make parking improvements thereon. It would allow us to prepare those sites or sites, and then erect, construct, reconstruct, improve, renovate, expand, furnish, and equip a county building or structure thereon, and make additions and improvements thereon. And we could do that through the issuance of general obligation debt. And so just like you did on the last item, it takes a three-to-two vote, if this charter is adopted, to issue general obligation for county facility debt under this charter. The alternative would be not to approve this charter. In that case, each time the county wanted to issue general obligation debt to fund a county facility project, it would require a unanimous vote of this board. It would require then three rounds of publication of the intent to do that with a 30-day protest period. And then there would be a limit on how much total outstanding general obligation debt we could have out under that particular provision, when we have stepped out from under the old charter. And that would be 0.5% of the county's assessed value at that time, which we have calculated between 25 and 30 million, depending on which year of the budget or the financial forecast you're looking at. So the recommendation today, of course, is to adopt this charter to provide a little more flexibility. So what would be required today is that you would adopt this resolution, again with a four-to-one vote. We would then publish it twice. That second publication would trigger a 60-day protest period, and so that would run through December 20th. And so this new resolution would be in effect December 21st, assuming we survive through all of those steps. So I am more than happy to answer questions. I'm also more than happy to defer to our legal friends for their help, but otherwise would recommend you authorize the charter resolution and publication.
Okay. Lindsey, thank you. I know we've been, we've talked about this a little bit before, so appreciate the more information and the explanation. So I don't see other questions. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to confirm. You said the calculation of 0.5% of the assessed value right now would be?
It ranges from 25 million to 30 million, depending on whether you're looking at this year's budget or outer years of the financial forecast when this would actually be in effect.
And to clarify, that's not total debt. That's just debt for?
That would be general obligation debt for this only. It would not retroactively apply to any other general obligation debt that we have.
But it's only for buildings and the things that you?
Right. It would not for the, on road and bridge or anything else like that. I believe that's accurate. Correct, or? Yes, that Garth confirms.
Do we have right now a breakdown of our debt that we would say how much of our current debt? I'm just curious, how much of our current debt is of this category?
I don't have it with me, but I'd be more than happy to send that to you.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, there is, there's a time, there's a time aspect of this, of this action today, right? There's an intent, I think, to do something with debt before the end of the year still?
I think there, based on conversations I've heard with commissioners, there are debt-funded projects that are contemplated. And so I think we want to be in a position, regardless of whether we have that by the end of this year, to at least go into next budget year, next planning year, having this provision in place.
Okay. Right now, the three-block, the three-block, the three-block limitation is, is only a limitation that if we wanted to not go through PBC?
Correct.
We could go through PBC and still, it would change the rate of our, the interest rate of the bonds probably, but?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And regarding, regarding the unanimous vote requirement, can you please explain that again?
Sure. So if we were not to adopt this charter, if we were just to take action under the statute as it stands today, if each time you all wanted to issue building facility debt for a county facility, it would require a unanimous vote from the five of you to do that, and then three rounds of publication with a 30-day protest period each time. And so, as you might imagine, maybe not all five of you will agree. And then on top of that, there's that lengthy delay in having to do the publications and the protest period that may slow down some of the processes we want to do in order to actually fund work with debt.
So other, other urban, other urban counties that are designated as urban areas, I assume, like Johnson County, for example, have they taken the same action?
I believe Mr. Papun checked with them. I don't believe they have. I believe they use their PBC, right? Mike, can you speak to that, please? Or Garth?
Yes, Commissioner Howell, I discussed this with their Deputy County Manager. And up in Johnson County, he explains that they're, they get really more involved with their Public Building Commission and do almost all of their funding through both the Public Building Commission and using sales tax up there as opposed to the kind of bonding that we do for, for buildings.
And other counties or other municipalities that are not designated as urban areas, they're, they're essentially stuck with the statute, and they don't have an opportunity for an exemption. Is that correct?
I believe they'd probably be able to charter it just like we did before. And then you all set that three-block radius. And so that had been one of the things that had been contemplated in the past when we had not had the urban designation, was actually changing that charter to amend that space. But in terms of the technicalities, I'm absolutely going to defer to Garth or Mike.
Is there, is there another option for us to change that radius? Would that be another way to solve this problem?
Unfortunately, that, now that we're in urban designation, the statute that authorized us to have that charter no longer applies. And so I don't know if a radius could be built into this new resolution or not. I'll defer to Garth if you're willing to come up to the podium and speak to that, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. Garth Herman with Gilmore and Bell, the county's Bond Counsel. On your specific question, so this, under this charter resolution, in essence, the county is using its home rule power to exempt itself from an existing statute, and then to supply substitute provisions in place thereof. They have to be on the same subject matter, the same general subject matter. And so counties have a fairly broad amount of latitude, though, as long as you're working underneath that same subject matter, to put different sorts of triggers or sort of, you know, mechanisms in place. So if, you know, basically if four out of five members of the county commission wanted to put in some sort of a area test for where the powers of this charter could be used, that is something that could be included in there. You know, obviously with kind of the, the history of kind of looking at this and whether the three-block under the old Charter 56 made sense, and whether that was a large enough area for some of the projects, those are kind of more, you know, probably practical and political questions to get into. On the specific, could something like that be built into this charter? Yes, if four-fifths, at least four-fifths of the board agreed to basically provide for that in this charter, that is something that could be included. Yes.
I have never quite understood the three-block limitation. I don't know why that's part of our, part of our charter, but, because if you look three blocks from this building, it's been, you know, ground zero, so to speak. You look three blocks out, there's not that many buildings out there, or opportunities to build something, really, are very, very limited. And I believe my appointment to the PBC board has, they've never actually had any business come before them in the six years that I've been a county commissioner. You had a weird look from our CFO.
Ground, some ground leases with WSC.
Okay. It's pretty unusual. And, you know, I think that other municipalities, they use PVCs quite a lot, and for whatever reason, we don't tend to do that here. I don't know. One thing that makes me a little bit uncomfortable with this, with this charter resolution is that it, and I think when we take on debt, it's a very serious consideration, and I don't like the idea that we could simply, with a simple majority, really, we're not hardly limited on taking on debt. We, looking at the five categories we did just a moment ago on the previous agenda item, we would have a lot of debt authority with this charter resolution change, and it just takes a simple majority, a simple majority to essentially take on all that debt. And I don't know, but I like that. I also don't like the idea of unanimous decision, unanimous requirement either. I, I think there's, I wish it was something in the middle, you know, that says, when you take on debt, there ought to be maybe, maybe a requirement of a vote of four. But I don't like unanimous. I don't really like the simple majority either. But I think in both situations, there's reasons why, may not, that may not be the best policy. If we wanted to amend this policy and incorporate any of those other ideas, would we need to hold off on this today and, and have that discussion in the future before we adopt this? Or is there, is there opportunities, opportunities for that type of policy creation after we adopt this?
So I'll, I'll speak to this from, from the charter process, and then I'll defer to Lindsey on, on the policy side of that, whether there's something that could be handled there. At least from the charter resolution process, in essence, once the charter resolution is adopted, and it goes through the protest period and assuming no sufficient protest, that in essence becomes law for Sedgwick County. And under the Home Rule Act for Counties, the only way to then change that charter resolution is to go through the same process to amend that charter. So if, let's say the charter goes into effect as written, and then let's say that two years down the road, there wants to be a legal change made to that charter for some reason, then in essence, it would take a new charter resolution, adopted by at least a four-fifths majority of the county commission, to publication, 60-day protest period. Once that goes into effect, then that would amend this existing charter. It's been, it's been probably before everybody's time on here, but that, that was in essence what the county did, I believe, with Charter Number 56. The, the public, the county courthouse charter, where I believe that it was originally a prior charter, and then the Board of County Commissioners at, at the relevant time actually took action to adopt Charter 56, which amended the prior charter and provided some additional provisions in that.
Okay. Thank you for the answers to those questions.
Yes.
I would just say, as we wrap this up, that I, I guess I'm, I don't particularly like this agenda item. I think I'll support it, but I'll just say that the idea of unanimous vote requirement, in my opinion, is problematic. We did have that under the zoning area of influence policy we had, you know, previous, and we changed that. And I think that was the right thing to do, because really, nothing should require unanimous support from the commission, I believe. We ought to be, we ought to be able to say, most items are simple majority, and some things are especially important. We would require a supermajority on some items. So I think that's where this ought to be, ought to be, ought to be a supermajority requirement for that type of debt. But I don't think unanimous is correct. And so I, I am reluctantly, what should I say, not excited about supporting this, but I think maybe it's the right thing to do today. Thank you.
Okay. I believe, Madam Clerk, there was a motion and a second already presented. Okay. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Lindsey. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item M, Discussion of the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act.
Chairman and Commissioner Tom Stoles, County Manager. The CARES item today has three speakers, which will present in front of you. Brent will start off, and he'll talk about CARES Act, external funding programs, status, and program approvals. In that, there's three sections to what Brent will talk about, and at the end of that, he will call for a vote. Or you could take each of the three sections individually, up to however the commission wants to handle that. Mike Besseger will talk about three sub-recipient agreements for workforce development for approval that will require a vote. And Lindsey will then give her usual COVID spending status update for receive and file, and will also talk about CARES spending plan for K-12 buildings, which will require a vote. So you have several votes and several receiving files, and we'll just take them one at a time. Brent?
And Tom, can you repeat that, please? So the workforce presentation will require a vote?
That is correct, sir.
And the next one was?
Lindsey will talk about COVID spending status, that, the initial part of that will be receive and file, but she will drive to the end and talk about CARES spending for K-12 funding distribution, which the commission approved a couple weeks ago. We're ready to distribute that, and that will require a vote.
Okay, which would require a vote. Okay, thank you for just repeating that for our, okay. Good morning, Brent. Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Meitzner and members of the county commission. For the record, I'm Brent Shelton, your Deputy Chief Financial Officer. I'm going to speak about three of the five external funding programs that are underway: Public Health and Social Services, our Safe Operating Grants, and then the PPE Kit Program. Beginning with the Public Health and Social Services, for which an $18 million bucket of funds has been allocated, we closed the portal to receiving applications on September 20th, and since that time, that Financial Stimulus Review Team that you stood up some months ago has met 15 hours. We've also spent a lot of time outside of those meetings, just reviewing applications, getting subsequent or follow-up information from some of those applicants, to make sure that the recommendations that we're going to make today to you are sound, that they're COVID-eligible, or CARES-eligible, that they do have a link in terms of response to the COVID pandemic. to the COVID pandemic. So to begin with, the sheet that you've just received from Kate is an updated spreadsheet to one that I sent you yesterday, and that lists the agencies, the 58 social service and public health agencies for which the committee is ready to make award recommendations. And the total of those is $7,201,781.57. Just to give the community a little flavor in terms of how those dollars are being spent, over $2 million is being spent directly on personal protective equipment and disinfectant cleaning supplies and processes. There's over $1 million in this award recommendation that's going directly to mental health support services. Because all organizations have been forced to change the way they do business, the way they deliver services, there's about 665,000 in these awards today that go directly to information technology, rather than having some of the clients come to these facilities to get services. They have staff that are going out and delivering those services and working remotely, working from home, in order that they can be working more safely. And because it's becoming a more critical need because more and more people are not returning to work, we still have a number of unemployed folks and people that are hurting throughout the community, there's over $800,000 in direct food assistance to our different pantries that are located around the county. It's part of this $7.2 million award recommendation today. So how that stands against the $18 million bucket is that we still have about seven pending applications. Those seven pending applications, some of them are rather large. The total of all those exceeds $14 million. There's, and we're seeking some information from our consultants about CARES eligibility, trying to make sure that they are making a link to a response to the pandemic. And so those applications are going to be reviewed, and we'll be bringing subsequent funding award recommendations to you in subsequent meetings. Quick math, 14 million plus 7 million is 21 million, and we have an $18 million bucket. However, we're not sure that all 7 million, or all of that $14 million is going to be CARES-eligible. So in addition to me asking for you to approve the funding recommendation, the committee has asked if we could reopen the portal. That would take your approval to do so. The reason is simply one of efficiency. If at the end of the day, and the, and we've done final review of the existing applications, we find additional funds, there may be additional needs from people that have applied or from agencies that have applied. So we may be looking for additional money for food assistance or, or something of that nature. And if the portal is open, and as we get our, get, maybe get additional requests, or we see that agencies have spent more than was allocated to them, we could step back in and more efficiently make an award recommendation, rather than coming to you in a week or two and asking to reopen the portal to re-accept those applications. But in no event are we going to look at any of those supplemental requests until we have ruled on the ones that are in the system today, because they met the deadline. We're just trying to be a little more efficient moving forward if there are additional funds that are unallocated.
Okay.
Any questions about?
There's a couple of questions, but thanks, you're really clarifying it very well. How long will you expect the, if, if we agree to reopen the portal, how long would you want it to be open for?
I would say maybe another couple of weeks.
Two weeks or so.
Okay.
And, excuse me, but Commissioner O'Donnell has some questions. Are you finished? So we're ready for questions?
You bet. Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you. I agree reopening the portal whenever you need to come and ask us formally for that. Makes a whole lot of sense. My question is about our hospitals here. I see Rock Regional is receiving a little bit of money. I see Ascension Villa Christie is raising a lot of money. My question would be, did HCA Wesley ask for any money? Were they denied? Or did they just?
We've not received an application from them.
Okay. That, okay. That's fascinating. So, but a lot of the other hospitals in the area, you did.
Right.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Good question, Commissioner O'Donnell. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, first of all, I want to thank the committee that's been working on this. I appreciate the time and effort that they spent on it. I just have two different questions. When we met with that committee, we talked about whether or not that certain organizations might be viable after they receive this grant, and later on, can they continue? I noticed that Mount Hope EMS is on here, for example, and they were not staying in business. They just came back online here several months ago. Our EMS was covering for them for some period of time. Is, is Mount Hope EMS viable now? Is it something that we should be contributing to? That, that's, I, I just want to make sure that we're giving it to the places that are going to continue into business.
To your point, Commissioner Dennis, after that meeting, and sustainability was mentioned as a top priority, that has been asked of every applicant. Are you able to sustain this program or sustain the organization going forward? Without that, an affirmative response from those groups, we're not funding those things that don't appear to us to be sustainable. So the indication is that they will be sustainable going forward. They're, they're requesting an equipment purchase that will help them with some folks that have, are at high risk for complications when they get COVID, and this helps them with that, that process. But I think sustainability is one term that we ask it on every time we review an application. So we're looking at that very closely.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure that that one organization is sustainable. The second question I have is on passageways. I know they're supposed to be helping veterans. If you recall here, a couple of weeks ago during our public comments, while we had a veteran come in here, and, and he was needing some help, and, and one of the organizations I asked him to go talk to was Passageways. And he, he indicated that they were little to no help to him. And that's a theme that I've heard before. As a matter of fact, Chairman Meitzner and I met with the Veterans Administration here several months back, and they had concerns about passageways, whether or not that they are truly altruistic, or if they're, they're looking for funding for themselves, the, the managers of that organization. The location of passageways, one of the concerns that the Veterans Administration had was the location of passageways is south of 235, and we don't really have public transportation going out to, to that location. We don't have an ability of someone that is a veteran that, that goes down there to be able to use all of the services that are here in the central portion of the city. I guess I've got some concerns, especially if the Veterans Administration was concerned about them, especially if some, a veteran that went to them for services sent back an email to me saying that they, they weren't providing it. They came to us some time back and, and asked us for funding, and, and we did not proceed with it because there was some questions. I just want to make sure that if we're providing something to an organization, that it is an organization that is truly serving their needs of our community. And I don't want to take anything away, thing away from veterans. I am a very strong, strong supporter of our veterans. I just want to make sure that, that it is an organization that truly is supporting them. So I, I just have a couple of questions about some of these, and I want to make sure that they're completely vetted before I vote to approve this.
Okay. If you, if there are any on here that you would like to pull from the list, we could approve the rest and then bring those, we can address those questions. From memory, a lot of the requests for passageways had to do with some cleaning of some of their facilities and some PPE to, when they couldn't socially distance. But I, I don't recall the details now. We can certainly, certainly provide them.
I don't have a problem with approving it today with the stipulation. You go back and take a look at those two things that I've got questions on before that we provide any funding to them to make sure that, that truly is what we need to be supporting. And truly, I appreciate the committee's work on this. I know that they were very diligent. When we met with them, they were truly concerned about what was happening. It's just that I've had a couple of experiences, and I want to make sure that, that we're doing what we need to do. Thank you.
Certainly. Okay.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. First, I too just want to reiterate, I watched many of these discussions, and I appreciate the questions that were asked, the diligence of looking over each of them. I see Melody in the back, and she was a part of that. And I just, I want to say that they took time out of their schedules, volunteered their time to vet all of these applications and different rounds. So I, I really appreciate the, the matter of diligence that went into this. So if I'm, I just want to make sure that we're all correct and, and understand that, do we need to make a motion that says we're, we're opening the portal back up now? Is that what you're asking for?
Yeah. I would ask, I'll ask for a motion to approve the awards and open the portal.
Okay. So specifically, and I, I'm not sure, I'd love to hear from Melody, but is she going to come up later? I don't want to bring her up. I'd, I'd like to hear, you know, kind of how vulnerable populations, you know, how these funds are being, being used to reach, you know, the vulnerable populations of our community. I see a lot of organizations on here, specifically some care homes. That, that was nice to see. Just a ton of people who did take the, the time to fill this out. And so I'm hopeful that if we do open this up, other organizations will see there is more funding available. So I don't really need to, I mean, I, I don't know. Are you planning to speak, Melody? I see you in the back, but I, I don't know if you wanted to?
I do have questions. If you have questions on, I'm one of the happy to do.
Well, I just, I think it's important for people to understand, you know, to Commissioner Dennis's point about the vetting process that went into this. This is going to change a lot of things for a lot of people here in our community. I know that I had at least three people reach out to me last night concerned that they didn't hear the discussion. So if we could just, I, I would like to hear from you, Melody, about your experience, about the, the process you went through, and, and how these, this money is going to change the vulnerable population specifically in our community.
Thank you, Commissioner Cruz. I was going to say, madam. Commissioner Cruz, and to each one of the commissioners, and certainly Chairman, Chairman Meitzner. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to come to the mic and give my perspective of how the committee was able to, I would say, coalesce as a team to really look at the CARES that came before us from all across the, the county. I would also like to take a moment and thank county staff because I think they are doing a phenomenal job of some of the background work, the research work, being able to put together the matrices, to, you know, listen to all of our questions and concerns, and then come back and produce what it is that, that we've asked for, and then to incorporate the wishes of the commission. So I think there's thanks to go around, and of course, to the community. I, I echo your, your interest in concerns, Commissioner Cruz, that I wish there were even more folk within our communities that were able to put together an application and submit it, because that's exactly what these dollars are for. But to that point, those that did, I think we've done a, a good job of not only questioning some of them, just as you, Commissioner Dennis, have. Each of us had our own questions about different applications. Those went, those questions went to staff, and staff, I believe, took a good amount of time and energy to give us the answers that they were able to come up with. So we each had our own questions. However, we were able to coalesce as a team, which I thought was pretty phenomenal in and of itself, and then come, come back to the commission with this list of, I believe you said 58, Brent?
Right.
So for seriously vulnerable populations, and when I say seriously, I'm looking, I'm speaking directly about those that we know are disproportionately impacted by COVID. And that's going to be our communities of color, more specifically African-American, Black communities are, are folk within them, and Latinx. We have applications here that were received, and then we've been able to fund several on what I would say different levels. So we, we're looking at it from an educational perspective. There's healthcare along the lines of the home healthcare perspective and applications that were received, and we've been able to fund, as well as from the Black Alliance and the Council of Elders, which is very specific to mental health, mental wellness. And there is also a communications that's still pending, in one of the pending pockets that Brent Shelton has mentioned. Trying to think, I, I'm not sure what else to add to that, but by circling it back out, I'm really hopeful that we will continue to get additional applications that are viable that we can fund. So if you have any other questions, I'd be happy.
No, that's great. I mean, that's exactly, I think, what the community needs to hear, was that the process was very diligent in the efforts of both the, the team and our, our county staff. And, you know, with that, if there's no other questions, I'd like to make a, a motion that we approve the recommended awards totaling $7,201,781,000.
And 57 cents.
And 57 cents.
Been a motion and a second. I have a quick question, though. Mr. Papoun or, or Brent, do, do the commissioners need to acknowledge if they serve on any of these boards, either appointed or outside, just to, for the record?
I mean, I think that'd be a, a good idea, Commissioner. I don't think that there's any conflict of interest in terms of what the legal conflict of interest is, but it's always good to be transparent in these conversations.
Yeah, well, I, I think so, too. I, and I had no involvement in, in this application process or the decision, but, but I do serve on the Board of the Cerebral Policy Research Foundation of Kansas. I just want that to be known. I don't know if any other commissioners have anything.
I do serve on the Humankind Ministries Board, but that had no bearing on?
Right. Okay.
This decision.
And Commissioner Dennis?
And I serve on the Crime Commission. It's the only one I noticed right off the bat. But with the motion, are, are we going to review the ones that I was, had questions on?
Right. Commissioner Dennis, I'll be happy to bring a report back about those next week and tell you what we have found. And then if at that point you didn't want to allocate those funds, we could stop it at that point.
Very good. Thank you. So it's a motion to approve the recommended awards as presented, along with reopening the portal for two weeks effective whatever dates you determine to be viable. So, and no other comments? There's been a motion. Did you get a second? Okay. So motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Okay, the motion carries. Thank you, Brent. And obviously, we can't thank the committee, the committee enough. You'll hear that a number of times, I'm sure.
And we continue to express those thanks to them when we meet, because it's a lot of work. And just to the point that you made about the potential conflict of interest, every member of that committee has disclosed if they have any connection with, whether they serve on a board or any other type of connection with any of the agencies that we're hearing, that have all signed a conflict of interest form and have recused themselves in the event that they, from even from the discussion about an application that affects a committee or an organization with which they're involved.
Okay. That, thank you for helping it. All right. Next up.
So the second thing would be the Safe Operating Grant Program, of which there's a $7.5 million allocation. We are approaching 1,000 applications at this point in time. That process is ongoing. I can tell you that yesterday, we mailed out $147,000 and $5,001, $2,000 check to 30 different applicants. So that process is underway. As I mentioned to you before, we've added a layer or two to the vetting process to make sure that we're focused on those COVID-related expenditures that the, the businesses have. I think we're, we've got a process. We're working that process and getting it out as quickly as we can. One of the things that we have, we've had some requests from nonprofit organizations. Now, these would be nonprofits that aren't necessarily public health or social service, but some types of nonprofits that might operate a small office in town. They may, some examples might be, enough that these have requested, but the Builders Association, or Doc's Friends, or different museums, different types of nonprofit entities around have requested, requested access to the $5,000 grants. So if the commission is willing, we could expand the cri- So if the commission is willing, we could expand the criteria and allow for legitimate 501(c)(3) organizations. They'll have to file an IRS determination letter, W9s, all the appropriate documentation to make sure that they were an existing 501(c)(3) on March 1st, meet all the same criteria that the businesses have. They're also employers, they're just not working for profit. So that would be a, one recommendation that we would have going forward to continue to push these funds out into the community.
Okay, Brent. Pardon my, for some reason, I had kind of thought that there was a venue for nonprofits to try to, to try to apply. So this would be in the up to 5,000 grants, as determined. So, my personal feeling is I think we, we should open up to allow some nonprofits, as you've described, legitimate nonprofits to, to apply. I don't know how the rest of the commission feels. I don't have any lights on, but so I'll make a motion that we allow nonprofits to apply for the grants up to 5,000. There a second?
I'll second that, but I'd like to, I'd like to just talk real briefly about those businesses in our communities, like WAVE, Cotillion, all of our, you know, cultural hotspots in town that bring outside revenue in, and how we're going to address their needs. We had a conversation yesterday, I, I wonder when we're going to talk about that topic again? Are we talking about that next?
We are.
Okay.
Lindsey will finish up with that conversation today during, during her portion of the discussion.
Okay, thank you.
And Commissioner Howell?
I just think we need to have a, a good description exactly what kind of entities we're talking about. You just said places like Doc, but I don't know, I guess I don't have a good understanding as to why they're different than other 501(c)(3)'s we've already heard from. On this list, I notice there's actually one church, but I know we have about 600 churches in the community. I'm just wondering, have other churches applied and been rejected, or only one church applied? And I'm just, I'm just curious.
If memory serves, Commissioner, we had two churches that applied, and I think both of them received an award recommendation. The portal that was, has been open for public health and social service nonprofits, and some for-profit organizations that have a public health component, was specifically in that arena. What we're talking about here would be, that don't deal with public health, they're not in the social service area, but they are, maybe they operate a museum, maybe they operate an association for a group, things like that. They're still an office environment, they still have staff, so that, the only distinction we're making is that from the existing $5,000 grants would be that these are, they still meet all the same criteria, but they're just operating not-for-profit, but they would be required to file with a certificate of good standing that shows they are currently operating as a 501(c)(3) organization. They're gonna need to provide us with an IRS determination letter, which proves they were operating on or before March 1st of this year, a W9 to indicate that they have employees. So we're, they're gonna go through the very same vetting process that the small businesses or that the businesses do. It's just, we've had some inquiries, and there seems to be a need, this is the easiest way to fill that need.
Have we discussed this with the nonprofit chamber of service?
I have not.
Okay, I understand there's, there's around, I'm gonna just throw a number out there. I've heard, I've heard there's around 2,000 nonprofits in Wichita. I don't know if that includes churches or not, I don't know, but I, I do think there's a large number of them, and I think that we open this up to that number. What's the total budget available for these?
There's a, total budget is $7.5 million, and we're getting close to five, four and a half to five million now.
Couple million dollars left over that might be available to these types of nonprofits, okay? If we get a lot more applications than we have dollars available, how are we going to, how are we going to solve that? If we have qualified applicants, and they're all asking for help, and we've only got $2 million, what's the process to?
I think we've gone into each of these with the, the process would be if we have 3 million in requests for $2.5 million, we'll let you know about that before we say we're gonna cut all the awards, or allocate additional $500,000, if that's the case. So we would bring that back to you before we, we do that.
I've heard twice now someone used the word legitimate 501(c)(3)'s. What does that mean versus, I guess illegitimate? What, what, can you differentiate between the?
I could tell you that I've got Brent's nonprofit, but I don't, I'm not filed as a 501(c)(3). I don't have an IRS determination letter.
So as long as they have a legal, a legal filing, they'd be qualified, regardless of what they provide or do for the community?
They're gonna provide that, they're gonna provide us images of those documents.
It doesn't have to be necessarily service towards the community, it doesn't have to necessarily have a cares aspect, I mean, a, a, I'm sure every entity's been impacted by coronavirus, I'm not saying there's been anybody, any organization that has not been impacted. But this is money they can just put into their, into their bank account and use it any way, any way they want to. There's no, there's no stipulations on how they use this money?
Yes, Commissioner Howell, there are some stipulations in front of the grant. It tells them what the eligible and ineligible uses of the funds are.
But it's non-audited also. We're trusting, they're trusting that they're gonna use that money the way we've told them to do that.
Every one of these applications is subject to audit. One of the documents they sign subjects them to a reconciliation by the end of November. So if they spend the money on an ineligible use, or can't prove to us that they've spent it for an eligible use, and they've certified on the front end that they do have these eligible expenses, like rent when the facility was closed, additional PPE or disinfecting cleaning, those sorts of things are eligible, and there's some things that are not eligible. They can't pay back taxes, and we can't give them money to pay their property taxes with. We can't give them money to, to pay fines, things like that.
So they, they'll report back to us essentially how they spent it, and we're going to, we're going to accept that document, and as long as we receive that, then that's, that's really the end of that, probably. Okay. I think there's gonna be a lot more applications if we have money, but I'm, I'm fine with, I, I have no doubt that these entities have all been harmed, if you will, with the coronavirus pandemic, so I'd like to see them all, you know, receive some help. But I have just, to agree with Commissioner Cruz, I think that the business community, which I unfortunately, unfortunately, I don't think they've, I, I still don't think we've actually communicated as, as much as we possibly to use the word should have, because I think we've done our, we've tried, but I still think that the money would be, would be completely used up by the business community had they taken opportu, had an opportunity, should say, taken advantage of the opportunity available to them. And so I don't know if there'd be any money left over, but yeah, I'll support, I'll support opening this back up again, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, been a motion and, and a second to, to agree to open up a portal for grants up to 5,000 to the nonprofit groups in, in Sedgwick County for COVID-related items. That's the motion and the second.
I already seconded it.
Okay, no other comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell? Commissioner Dennis? Commissioner Howell? Commissioner Cruz? Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Thank you, Brent. So again, just like the previous one, you will have a date, and we'll have an announcement and website, and all those things. Okay.
And the final thing that I would visit with you about this morning is our PPE kit distribution that will begin Monday, October 12th, this next Monday. And if you'll notice on the monitors, here's a picture of Interest Bank Arena, and these are boxes full of masks, disinfecting cleaning. This has been a Herculean effort, and some of the side benefits of this program have been that folks that were laid off and furloughed, that are employees of Interest Bank Arena, have been allowed to come back to work to help bring in this product, assemble the kits and so forth. So we've, we've given them a bit of a lifeline, it's helped the arena as well. And we're ready to push these out through these different, 14 different locations that we have identified across the county. And I would just implore folks that want to reserve a kit, to go to sedgwickcounty.org, to the cares funding piece of the website, and send in that information, identify where they want to pick up the kits. We're asking for that information, not so that we'll deny people if they don't have that, but just so we have kits distributed to the right communities so that we can fill those needs when they show up. It'll also give us some demographic information on the back end, we'll know who we served and where they were served.
So Brent, when they, when they apply, or when they request, they, they say the size? Because it looks like you've got small, medium, large?
Right.
So, okay, and that's part of their request, is how many employees, or how many they anticipate they need to use? Customers, whatever, okay, thank you.
So they'll tell us, you know, number of employees, business name, location, and where they want to pick it up from.
Right.
Is basically all we're asking.
Thanks for that information.
You bet.
Is that, this, that's just an information?
That and.
Commercial you just did?
We appear to have, because we bought a lot more of this than we thought we would, we would appear to have capacity to open this program up also to the nonprofit groups that we had mentioned earlier, because we know they have needs as well.
Okay.
I guess I would ask for a vote to approve opening this up to the, the 501(c)(3) organizations.
Okay, I'll make the motion to include the 501(c)(3)'s in this distribution of PPE.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. No other comments? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell? Commissioner Dennis? Commissioner Howell? Commissioner Cruz? Chairman Meitzner?
And I will give control to Mike Fessinger, who'll talk about our workforce development agreements.
Okay. Is this? Can we take a five-minute break to read all this?
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Fessinger, Assistant County Counselor. You've been provided with three workforce development sub-recipient agreements. Despite their bulk, all three of them are very similar to each other, and each pertains to a separate workforce development program that this commission has already approved. The first agreement pretends to, pertains to Friends University. Friends University intends to use these funds to offer $1,000 scholarships to its students that have been negatively affected by COVID-19, typically from a financial standpoint. WSU Tech has outlined a program in which they're going to provide its students with skills retraining and applied learning opportunities, as well as additional equipment for its facilities to further that goal. And then Workforce Alliance of South Central Kansas will work directly with Sedgwick County employers to upskill current employees to stymie impending layoffs. And so, these agreements are similar in scope and in form to what you have approved in the past. And it's our ask this morning that you vote to approve.
Okay, any questions? I think this process has been going on pretty, pretty thorough, and.
Correct.
And much, much detail has just been given to us. So.
And I will tell you that these agreements have been vetted by our auditors and consultants as well.
Good, okay, thank you for that. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve. Okay, motion to approve and second's been made. I don't see any other questions. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell? Commissioner Dennis? Commissioner Howell? Commissioner Cruz? Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner, thank you, thanks for the work. Next up.
All right, hello again, Commissioners. Lindsey Corusso, you're CFO. So we will quickly, I promise, go through a spending update. So, this is just going to be a receive and file item, just like we do every week that you meet. We provide you an update with where we stand on COVID spending, and so that is not just cares funding, that is all sources of revenues and/or general fund contingencies that have been dedicated to trying to address COVID-19 within the organization. So, our spending status totals $26,417,677. This is up over the $24.9 million that we reported to you two weeks ago, and we'll quickly go through where those increases are. Before we get to cares, I'm just gonna hit very briefly on our other sources of funding. So, within the county's general fund, we're up to about $1.4 million in spending there. That's only up $40,000 from the last time we spoke, and that's because of a, an Amazon, it's basically a blank cart that we create for Amazon, so we can buy things like webcams and other things pretty quickly. We had that set up in the general fund from the very get-go because of timing, and so we've increased that over time. The plan, of course, will be to reimburse that with cares funding at some point, and we'll bring that to you for consideration. We are still at $22,000 worth of spending in the Fire General Fund. There has been no change there in the last two weeks. And at $58,000 for the Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Fund, again, that was funding that we used to provide cleaning services in our correctional facilities early on, and so that has not changed and will not change. So, then let's talk about cares. So the county, of course, received its direct allocation of $99.6 million. Of that, as of to, or as of yesterday, we are at $21,666,374, and that is up over the $20.3 million that we had two weeks ago. So of course, this is where the bulk of that spending has occurred. So, of that, $13.2 million, $13,202,822, has been to support county needs. And so that includes everything from the hero pay we've talked about, it's all of the temporary positions, to the health departments, testing, to the, the court technology that you all approved the last time we met. So actually, that is the main reason for this $1.4 million increase, is that that order for the $900,000 worth of remote court technology has now been placed with the expectation that it'll be received by December 30th. So that contract has been entered into, and we're moving forward with that. We also have another $75,000 for temporary positions, $43,000 for that Family First Coronavirus Relief Act payroll. And so Commissioner Cruz, I know you'd had that question at the last meeting about how much that's being used. I think we've provided some information on that, but this number remains consistent with what we've seen the last few pay periods. We did see an uptick when folks went back to school, that is ineligible use of the expanded family medical leave. We have had some additional costs for office reconfiguration as people are starting to plan for social distancing when people return to work more normally. Those types of configurations are being done. We have purchased more stackable cots for the jail, of course, as the number of folks who are incarcerated is increasing. And then, as we would expect, $80,000 has been incurred for PPE for things like gloves, masks, and thermometers. We have had only a $13,000 increase for temporary employment services, but I would tell you that right now, the contracts and expectations we have for that are up around $1 million. And so that is a fairly significant number, I just want to make sure that you're aware of that, because you did approve a number of positions, up to about $3.5 million worth, and we're simply paying for that now through the Temporary Employment Agency. So in addition to the $13.2 million for county services, we are up to $8,461,552 in care support to schools and cities. And up next on our agenda will be to talk a little bit more about the schools. But 100% of the advance to schools who applied has now been paid. That's $3,494,765. And then for cities, now, all of the cities that have applied have also been paid. And again, they got a 50% advance of that original $10.1 million allocation. Now, back on September 23rd, you did improve and increase allocation for those cities, and so that is next on poor Mr. Fessinger's list of agreements to tackle, is amending those agreements with schools and cities to reflect those new dollars. So, we are up just slightly because that final payment was made, about $21,000. So, if we look at the county's direct allocation, we started with $99,636,917. As I said, we've spent $21,666,374, and so that leaves us with today. And so that leaves us with today, $77,970,543. Now, we are less than 90 days away from the 12:30 deadline. We, a couple of us actually have some countdowns that we're paying some attention to. We do have plans, I want to reassure you, based on that spending plan that you approved two weeks ago. We do have plans to get this money out the door. You saw some of that with the public health and social service discussion today. And we will be keeping a very close eye on this and coming back to you for recommendations if it looks like we'll have any possibility of funding remaining on how we can better utilize those funds than how they're allocated today. So then moving to Spark. So again, the state of Kansas gave us $9.3 million. Our spending now is up to $3,075,645. Of that, those 30 round one small business grant agreements that Brent referenced earlier have been paid out. That's $147,000. We are at $2,933,645 of the allocation to, for PPE kits. So then moving to CARES, HAVA funds. So again, the Secretary of State's office gave us $420,000 for specific needs. They have approved all of those. We are at spending of $241,584. That's up $590 from two weeks ago, and that's for cleaning and operating supplies. I know as we move closer to the election, certainly we'll start to see an increase in spending there. So I am more than happy to answer any questions on the spending. Otherwise, I recommend you receive and file, and we'll move to the next portion of my report.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. So of the elections money, the $241,584, the remaining balance to get us to $400,000 is, what, what is the remaining balance?
We have roughly $180,000 that still needs to be spent. My understanding is that they do have a plan for that. And I think Tom has the specific details that we'll go into a little bit later on, what those plans are.
Okay. Want to make sure that that is going to be discussed. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I don't see any other questions. I'll make a motion to receive and file. Lindsay's report, second. No other questions. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meister.
Aye.
Okay, and so next we'll talk about K-12 school funding. And Kate, do you happen to know if we have that PowerPoint? Well, I will, I will start giving some background here quickly. So at your last meeting on September 23rd, we did have total funding allocation approved of $5 million to K-12 schools. And so you had approved in your July 8th spending plan, an allocation of $3.5 million. And if you recall, at the time that you approved that $3.5 million, you approved 100% of the funding to be advanced. Thank you. And you also approved that, that would go to the eligible schools in, located and headquartered within Sedgwick County. So we have subsequently developed agreements and signed agreements with all those schools. And as I reported in our spending plan, we have paid all that out. Just a reminder that on this, guidance changes frequently. And we actually just had some guidance come out on September 2nd that says that schools are entitled not to have to report details, not to necessarily be monitored, monitored for up to $500 per student. So that is kind of the threshold that, of course, our consultants have told us to bear in mind. So we did not come close to that. You can see on this table here for round one spending on the PowerPoint. The base allocation was $3.5 million. We did have the two schools listed on the bottom of this table that did not actually apply for the funding. And so we wound up paying out just a little less than that $3.5 million. And so what we're proposing today is to pick up that $5,235 that was not allocated in round one, plus taking that $1.5 million additional funding that you've allocated, advance funding that to the schools, just giving them 100% of that funding and amending their agreements. And we're proposing to do that on a flat rate. So in the round one, those larger school districts or school systems were allocated an outright $100,000 as a base. And then we did a per pupil basis on top of that. And so you can see that in kind of the middle to the left section of this page. Now, the round two proposal would take whatever is left, so $1,505,235. It would divide it equally by student, and every district would get that amount. And so that brings us to $16.25 additional per student. And so that would give us a range of $650 additional that would go to Branches Academy, up to $802,559 that would go to USD 259. And so that would fully allocate the 500, or the 5 million. And the far right table here shows you the grand total that would be received by each, each school district or school, based on that and the dollars per student. Again, bearing in mind that $500 limit that, under which we don't really have to do much monitoring as long as they are able to report information to us the way the federal government is requiring us to then report information to them. So I am more than happy to answer any questions about this proposal. I do have a spreadsheet if we need to do math. But if not, I would recommend that we, or I recommend that you approve this distribution model and, again, 100% advance funding.
Okay. Couple of questions. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, we've talked about this, and I appreciate going through the process. I know that schools need the extra money that we have available to them. And I definitely think that we're going in the right direction. I approve and recommend that we do follow the guidance that you have just provided us, that we go this time by the per student and divide it up that way. My concern last time was small districts had some immediate needs that, that they didn't have the funding for, and we've met those. And so unless there's any objection, I make a recommendation that we approve the plan that you just provided to us.
But motion and second. Commissioner Cruz has a question?
Thank you, Chairman. You know, I, I'm glad to see that we are allocating it per pupil for every single district the same. That's how we should have done it the very first time. So I will be supporting this because I believe that that is exactly how it should have been done. Thank you.
Okay. There's a motion and a second to, as proposed, I'm going to call it round two, correct?
Yes, sir.
Which will fully deplete the school funding bucket.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. I don't see any other comments or questions. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meister.
Aye.
Okay. My, oh, sorry.
Yep, next item.
So it's not a formal item, but Commissioner Cruz did allude to it earlier, and that is the discussion of business interruption. So I just wanted to provide a quick update on what has happened since the last discussion we had kind of about this on September 23rd, when we went back and kind of pushed a little more against our consultants to kind of help us understand the scope and requirements of what such a program would require. We also had conversations with members of the community who would benefit from such a program to better understand what the needs are out there. And certainly, there are true needs. What we have learned from the consultants, so let me step back for a moment and remind you who all we have engaged at this point. We have our audit firm, BKD, though for independence reasons, because they do conduct our audit. They are not actually providing an audit service for us on this. They're teaching us how to be grantors, how to do compliance and monitoring. We have expanded our engagement with them for them to do some testing of our documentation and other things in preparation of a single audit. So we do rely on them heavily for the compliance side. We also have engaged Widow Brian's, and that's probably the group we've talked about the most. So that group of consultants tells us what is eligible. They do the analysis, they prepare memos for us, and they help us understand maybe what the scope of certain projects should or could be and how we would structure programs. Then finally, we have an entity called Disaster Recovery Services. We actually reached out to them before we even knew about CARES, if you remember this discussion. This is when Tom had first authorized the transfer of budget authority within the general fund, and we thought we were going to only have FEMA reimbursement as our opportunity to recover some of the costs. So we had engaged this firm, DRS, to assist us with that. Again, they're crisis management. So they do business interruption as a matter of course through their normal work. So they also have kind of been subcontracted now with BKD to help us provide greater assurance and greater information because we do have so many projects happening with our CARES funding. So we asked all three of them point blank about business interruption. Would you do it? Would you not? Two of them came back and said, we wouldn't. One came back and said, well, we recognize that there's the need in your community, and, and you want to do something to help, and it, so it's an allowable, eligible expense. So then the question became, well, what would it take to stand up a business interruption program? And what we received back was a fairly thorough memo that outlined all of the criteria that would be necessary to create a program, including objective guidelines to help us pick who could be targeted. Again, this is federal taxpayer money, and so we need to be fair in our application and practice. And so they were going to help us to find some criteria. Then they helped us understand that from the business perspective, in order to be eligible, they have to be able to demonstrate the impact of what has happened and be able to demonstrate that that is due to COVID-19. And so response then would have to be specifically tailored to that amount of need. That would require us looking at annual or quarterly tax filings. It would require us going into their monthly financials. It would require us looking at all invoices and expenses that have been incurred due to COVID-19 that are extreme. It would require us to go in and look at what are their fixed and variable costs. So a tremendous amount of information would be required of each business that was applying. And then a tremendous amount of work would need to be done on the county's behalf to go and embed that information. So those were the, the beginning steps. And then, of course, there would be the requirements that once the funding went out, that we would have some monitoring responsibilities for the audit period, and those folks also would be subject to audit. In the discussion with the auditors, they did say the very maximum award, if we move forward with a business interruption program, would be $100,000. And that actually falls a little outside of the norm. There are a lot of communities, I found about a dozen or 14 in a Google search, looking for business interruption grants that were reading, being done with CARES. Typically, they range from $15,000 to $25,000. We did see one, the state of Vermont, it's doing $150,000 small business, or I'm sorry, business interruption grants. But they did that as a round two. They actually had a much smaller number in the first round. So also in conversations with the community, we have heard that $100,000 really isn't going to cut it. That's not what the need is that we've heard. So we started the process to see what, what this would look like. And so we actually reached out to Jeremy Hill for the Center for Economic Development and Business Research at Wichita State. And he provided quite a bit of very useful data that was pretty interesting if you're nerdy like me. So it showed data by sector. It took employment data from 2017 on as kind of a baseline. And that data showed us what the impact was by sector. And what we found in that data, yes, sir.
Is that this chart here?
Yes, sir.
Is there any way that?
It sure can.
Kate, you could pull that up, please.
Kate, I have that in an email that I forwarded last night. I apologize.
I'll forward it to her.
If the public could have a visibility to this, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So I'll pause until we get that pulled up because I think it gives better context.
I would agree.
Yeah, and, and it's corrected.
Okay.
Uh, it would be that top email. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, so, actually, it's just the email, Kate. It's in the body of the email. I apologize. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, so what you can see, and I've, I've added some fields here to clarify this data after what I had sent you. So what this data shows, again, is employment data by industry. And what this is taking, this particular table here is showing, is what is the comparison of employment count for the month in 2020 versus the same month in 2019. And then we're going to move over to the right. I'm going to show you data on a little different tack. So the qualifiers over off the, to the right, assign some highlights to different categories. So if there is a greater than 75% drop in employment in that time period total since the beginning of the year, it's highlighted in red. And so let's focus on those for a moment. So what you can see is that under manufacturing, transportation, equipment manufacturing, and aerospace product and parts manufacturing are both down nearly 100%. And certainly, for any of us who have been watching the newspapers, that's not a surprise. We know that aerospace is taking a hit. Now, if we scroll all the way down to the bottom of this table, we have a few other fields that look similar, the bright red. And that's in the leisure and hospitality industry. So overall, in the leisure and hospitality industry, it's down 102%. For accommodation and food services, it's 103% down versus last year. And it's 94% down in food services. So the conclusion that essentially our consultants helped us draw from this is that there's not one particular sector that we can focus on and objectively say is having the hardest hit. Also, what is interesting from this data, and I'll scroll down a bit here, is the information by sector. Because what we need to keep in mind is, if we were to open it to anybody who'd had roughly, I'm going to round up and say 100% of a hit, which we saw there were four different unique categories that had that, then how many possible applicants could we have? So unfortunately, we have two different data sets that we're working with. The first set of data was from the Bureau of Labor Statistics. The second set of information that I'm showing you now is actually from Census data. And so they don't quite match up spot on. But I think to help us understand the scope of what you would be walking into with a fair, objective process for business interruption grants, we need to look at this information by sector. And so this is table number two, which shows the 2018 information, which is the latest available. And it shows the number of establishments. It's sorted by the greatest to least number of establishments in a category. And so what I would point out to you is this accommodation and food services has 1,165 establishments in 2018. If we scroll down and look at manufacturing, there's 502 establishments. And you can see, based on the annual payroll for manufacturing, it is the largest single payroll. So it would have the largest potential revenue impact based on layoffs and furloughs and things like that. So when we talk about $100 million, which when we round up, 99.6 million, that's what we get. And we've already talked about the scope of the need for nonprofits and for the county itself to do testing and public health and public safety response. When you start looking at $100 million and you start looking at a scope of this number of establishments or entities that have been impacted, it's really hard to imagine how much money we actually would need to come up with to do this effectively. Especially when we've been told by our auditors that the maximum cap they would recommend is $100,000. And some of the feedback we've heard is, at least for the larger entities, that's not really going to do it for them. And so one of the questions you all have talked about and actually talked about earlier is viability and sustainability. To what extent do we put money towards something where we know it's not going to be enough to sustain? So unfortunately, the data didn't quite show what we thought it would show. The dollars that we have available don't seem to go far enough to fix this type of problem. And so we are certainly at your direction. This is, the commission has control of this as the policymaking body. But from a financial perspective and the fiduciary perspective, it's hard to imagine how we can craft an effective program. it's hard to imagine how we can craft an effective program looking at this type of information. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I don't have any motions to recommend to you, maybe a receive and file unless you want to direct us to do and establish a program.
Okay, Lindsey, thank you for the information. Quite a lot, and very deep dive on this, and much, much appreciated.
My pleasure.
Commissioner Cruz has a question.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. This is not an easy, easy situation for anyone to be in. I don't, however, want to say there's nothing, absolutely nothing that we can do. Like, we're throwing our hands up, and that's just it. So I don't know that, I'd like to work towards a solution, if at all possible. I don't want to just table this now forever indefinitely. I wonder if we could give it a week. I know that that's a very short timeframe. But to sit here and say that we can't do anything, I don't believe is the best, in the best interest of our community. We have some folks that, I don't know. I mean, this is just very, very hard. And so I'd like to, given this information, this is a lot to digest over a day. And so I'd really like to just make it known that I'd like to work with you, maybe pull in some of these industry boots-on-the-ground folks to see if there's any way that we can come up with some solution that will help our community.
Okay. Well, and I was, personally, I was hopeful that we could do an interruption service for quality of life in our, in our community that would specifically help some of the unique venues and unique operations that we have that are unique to Sedgwick County. My hope was that it was going to be a small number and a, and a significant amount to make a difference. But, but based on this information, it's very difficult to, to try to isolate out just a few when, when it looks like there's the needs and qualifications of many and try to, to try to say these people would not qualify when they, when the numbers say so, and these people would. But that said, that's my own personal observation from the difference between last week and this week. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, since last week, actually Commissioner Meisner and I were both able to sit on a Zoom meeting with Chamber of Commerce here. And the first people we heard from were the airport. And the airport is hurting very badly right now. And then Susie Santo was on there from visit Wichita, and she went through all of the other hotels that are hurting and everything else that's reliant upon visitors. We have travel agencies. We have things like Village Travel that are hurting. So the money that we have available is not going to touch all of those, and that's unfortunate. But if we're going to save anything, I think we all agree that something like the airport is more important to our economic vitality in this area than a lot of different venues and businesses. So I understand where you're coming from, and I truly believe that there's no way that we can pick winners and losers in this. And I think we need to follow the guidance that we've got from people like BKD and Whit O'Brien and looking at, is this something that's doable? And I'm not sure right now that it's doable. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Okay. Well, with that, I'm going to make a motion that we receive and file this report because it is incredibly important, and it's official information that should be available to the public besides just the presentation. But I'll make a motion to receive and file the report.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to receive and file. Don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meisner?
Aye. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. I would like to make a motion to have an off-agenda item so that we can talk about the elections grant that we have received this week.
Okay. Just make sure, Lindsey, are you done with everything?
Yes, sir, I am. Thank you.
So there's a motion for a off-agenda item related to the elections grant. I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell? Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meisner?
Aye. Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. So this past week, I was given some information about a possible grant award that we could apply for. I did some preliminary research on my own to just check it out, to see if it was worth sending on to our staff to fully vet. I ended up sending it to our, our staff via Lindsey, our CFO, our county manager, our elections folks, and kind of put it, put the ball in their court to see if they could vet this, to determine whether it was worth our time. It was determined that it was worth our time. And so the, the grant was applied for and subsequently awarded. And so I'd like to talk about it because it seems like we're having some, some, I would like to ask Mr. Manager if you could discuss the email that you sent to all commissioners last night to sort of bring to light the challenges and the questions that have been asked about this grant.
Yes, Commissioner.
Tom, can you go ahead? Thank you, if you can address some of this. Appreciate it.
Sure. Tom Stills, county manager. And I just want to state for the record that on the phone, I'm hoping, we have Tabitha Layman, who is our election commissioner, and Anna Meyerhoff, who has been on loan over in the election office to help administratively to answer technical questions or budgetary questions related to this. Commissioner Cruz, the email I sent out to commissioners at 8:13 PM last night, this was kind of a summary of this, of the grant, and also a summary budgetarily of what the election office looks like in the year 2020. And I'll just kind of go through this email very quickly here for the public. In 2020, Sedgwick County is budgeting a little bit over $2 million in general taxpayer dollars to manage and run elections. The commissioners, a few months ago, approved, because we were having difficulty getting workers, approved a $2 per hour increase for supervising judges and poll workers as a way to entice people to work in a tough time with pandemic and with a very huge election facing our region and country. This pay bump that was authorized is an additional $83,252. That was not budgeted. We would have to go into contingency, and we're planning to go into contingency if we, if we move that direction. The, the election office did, and we've talked about this briefly a few minutes ago, received a little over $400,000 of COVID money from the state of Kansas to facilitate and help with our local elections, of which, as Lindsey just talked about, is a little over halfway already allocated. And Anna is on the phone here if there's, if there's a question about how the remainder of that money has been spoken for. So that money has, has been received and has either been spent or has spoken for as we move forward. With the potential addition of this grant that, in 40 years of government, I have never seen a grant move this quickly, where we go between application and award with very little strings attached to it. It was, you know, I guess it's the year 2020. We should expect anything, right? But this whole thing transpired in 48 hours or less, and it was something. So with the $816,458 that was granted by the Center for Tech and Civic Life, Commissioner Layman has laid out a spreadsheet, and she would like to spend a little bit more than half of this money on additional express boat machines. And as I said, she's on the line and can talk about these and the value that they would bring to our process, not only this year but into the future. She wants 70 ballot on-demand printers. We would pay the $2 an hour addition to election workers through this money since it was not budgeted. We would acquire ballot drop boxes, some security camera fees to go along with that, space rental for storage of additional equipment, and promotion of early voting ballot drop boxes and other language materials to facilitate the election, and along with $93,000 in operating supplies. So this is the email I had sent to you all just so you'd have all the information as we, as we considered this. If there's further questions, and maybe I'll give Tabitha a shot here, if that's okay, Chairman, to let her kind of just chime in.
Absolutely.
Tabitha, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Very good. Commissioner, you have the, you have the floor at this point.
Yep. Okay. Tabitha, thanks for joining us.
Well, the first thing I'd like to start with is just giving a little bit of background on the Center for Tech and Civic Life organization. This is a not-for-profit that we have had a longstanding working relationship with in our office and many, many, many election offices in the state of Kansas do as well, and across the country. And they really facilitate tools for election officials. There are some things that they charge for, but many other things they do not. And we have, we utilize many of their tools every election. And in fact, we have, my staff and I have been involved in helping them create tools for other election offices to use. So this organization is an organization that we are incredibly familiar with. We have a very good working relationship with, and I trust implicitly with their background, that what they are trying to accomplish. And in fact, I got an email today that basically just wanted to get clarified, say, just a few, actually, just a few minutes ago, saying basically, here's what you can spend the money on is you need it. Basically, if you need it for the elections, do it, and let us get out of your way. And to me, it's very, very clear that they do not have any kind of agenda with this. They are simply trying to help facilitate this. So I wanted to start with that and just, and just say that. And I will say again, as I've worked with many people on this board for years, I have absolutely zero inclination of their own personal political beliefs, even as we have worked very closely together for many years. So anyway, that being said, I would just like to talk about some of these things that we would like to do with this money. You know, there is a significant difference in what I would come to you at, in these very, I would say, troubled times and ask for when I know that budgets are very, very tight and that the next two years are going to be very hard for the county budget. There's a big difference in what I would come to and say, "Hey, I'd like to buy these things," versus when someone says, "Hey, I'm willing to give you $816,000. Can you use it?" Yeah, I can absolutely use it. But these are not necessarily things that I would have come to with my handout, other than the board worker pay and installation of these ballot drop boxes and said, "Hey, I'm going to ask you to prioritize this spending over something else in the county that has a need." So I, I just feel like there's, there's a big difference between me coming to you and saying, "I want to buy 100 machines," and somebody saying, "Here's money. Can't use it." And I say, "Absolutely. If we buy these 100 machines, this will mean that this expands our lifetime of our fleet out because we won't be using all of the machines at the same time. This will actually give us backups for this election where we are pretty much deploying every single machine we have right now. So if a machine goes down at a polling place, we will be able to replace it instead of them just being down a voting machine." So this would, this would be a big, huge difference for us. So I think those are the main things I wanted to talk about. And then, I, oh, I'm sorry. I did want to talk about on the item of promoting early voting. We are in a unique situation in Sedgwick County where we do have more absentee ballot applications than we've ever had before, but actually not as high as I was hoping they would be to offset a sort of distancing and trying to protect voters at polling places. So because of that, and because we are opening, and interestingly, I would like to utilize, have the communications department utilize more advertising than we have to try and really push that early voting, voting option because that is a way that we can serve those voters who do want to vote in person. But it gives us that opportunity to do so in a more social distance environment, and it will protect our voters, hopefully, and our election workers as well. So I think that's all I had to say, and I'm happy to answer any question.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Tabitha, for being here today on the phone. I just have a couple of questions. Could you speak to the grant amount that we received and also the speed in which that we were given this award? Did you have a chance to talk about how they determined how much money we were going to be allocated?
It was, my understanding is based on how many registered voters you have, the maximum amount we could have received was $1 million. And quite frankly, I expected $50,000, $60,000 at most, maybe. I mean, there were talks that some larger counties were getting more, but this is just such a staggering amount that I never expected to get this much. And for us to be able to use it not only to facilitate elections this year, what we're trying to do is be very, very deliberate in what we purchase with it so that it is a continual increase, net increase for Sedgwick County and for our voters moving forward, and to do it just being a one-time expense, it being something that we can utilize for years to come.
And then the speed in which the application was, was given?
I have, you know, I will be very honest with you, and I'm just going to admit my own deficiency here. I had received an email about this. But it was while I was in the hospital and feeling very ill. And I kind of forgot about it. It went on a back burner, and I failed to follow up on it. And so when this came back up onto the front of our plate, it was very quick. That turnaround was just staggeringly quick. I could not believe that they approved it in just a couple hours. But it does show to me the very lack of strings that they have attached to this. They verified that we were who we said we were, that we were in election office, and that we were going to use the money to conduct the 2020 elections. And that is what their interest is. And that's all they are asking from us, pretty much, is my understanding.
Yeah, they, they understand the importance that this election is happening quickly, from my understanding, obviously. So they understand that it's important to get this money out so that we can get it allocated, things ordered, things delivered, things programmed. Tabitha, we got your back over here, so don't worry about that. But I appreciate, the one, the last one thing that I want to mention before other questions, there, we are not the only county in Kansas who has received this award. There are two dozen counties in Kansas who have applied and received this. Allen, Atchison, Cherokee, Cloud, Crawford, Dickinson, Douglas Ellsworth, Ford, Franklin, Grant Gray, Harvey, Hodgman, Marion Morris, Reno, Rooks, Celine, Sedgwick, Sherman, Sumner, Thomas, and Washington. So we are not the only county who has received these funds and who will be taking advantage of this, this grant during this election cycle.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess my main concerns when I first heard about this last, I think it was Thursday we got it. And it just came as an email, as information from the manager to all five commissioners, and said, "Hey, this grant, option has come up, but we've applied for it." And at the time of the email, it was already approved, and we were getting $800 and some thousand. And that's out of the ordinary with the way things normally happen. Because if you look, we haven't got to our consent agenda yet going on noon. But if you look at our consent agenda, we've got three different grants that we're going to approve on our agenda. You know, and one of them is $275,000, one of them is $334,000. So for the commission to just kind of get informed of a grant of $800 and some thousand is totally out of the ordinary of what I'm expecting the way that we do things. And I understand that there was a suspense on this, and we didn't get to the point where that we could do that we could do what we normally do. As long as we got Tabitha on the line, I've been able to do vote canvases now for almost four years, and Tabitha does a great job of making sure that our elections are absolutely error-free, and I appreciate that. There's a lot of concern going into this next election where there's going to be things going on. The manager, I asked him to send me a copy of this grant, and I read through the grant, and I couldn't find any strings because that was my main concern. What strings come with this grant? Are there strings that may favor one party over the other in a very, very critical election? And as I read through that grant, I did not see strings that would favor one party over another. So I guess my question for Tabitha, that was a long prelude to my question, and I apologize, but you have done a great job of being very diligent in making sure that our elections are fair, impartial, and anyone that votes, it's a valid vote that is a citizen here in Sedgwick County. Do you see anything in this grant that is going to detract from what you've done over the years or is going to impact us when we go into a vote canvas, I think on November 16th? So can you address that, please?
Sure. And you know, that's pretty much what I was trying to speak to with our relationship with the Center for Tech and Civic Life. You know, this is, this grant comes with fewer strings attached than money we receive from the federal government, the $400,000 we've already discussed. You know, this is, to me, it was, it came down to whether or not there were strings attached to it. And there are none. I can find none, and they have, again, you know, the email that I got just a few minutes ago that said, basically, let us get out of your way, spend the money, get your election done, you know, it was just, you don't have to ask permission, just do it, go. You know, this is a, this is not something I have ever encountered before, and so this is a very, very unique circumstance. I think we all would agree, it's very unique to have someone coming who wasn't offering us $816,000 that is not coming from taxpayer money. And so I believe that with it being, if it was just offered to us from an organization directly, I would never, I don't care who the organization is, I would be concerned. But it's going through the Center for Civic Life, Tech and Life, and their reputation and the fact that they are absolutely nonpartisan and that there is no, there's no direct line anywhere. No one has access to anything they have, you know, it is literally just giving us money to conduct this election. And so I would just say, I have, I do have slight concerns about the perception, and I will be completely honest with you about that, but trying to explain very, very clearly that there are no strings attached to this and that this money obviously is a large amount that is not coming from the taxpayers, and we could do a significant amount of good here in Sedgwick County. But I absolutely 100% respect the fact that this is your decision. You guys are the holders of this decision, and we will abide by whatever decision you make, but I am comfortable with accepting this money.
Okay. Thanks, Tabitha. Just to summarize and make sure that we're clear, do you see any way that if we accept this grant, that it's going to provide any advantage to either party in the upcoming election?
Absolutely not, because what we're using it for will benefit every single voter, not any, either party or even one specific voter.
Okay. And do you see anything as we go into that vote canvas that's going to cause us any kind of concern? And I know that myself and Commissioner O'Donnell, I doubt if, set on that vote canvas, we'll have proxies, but do you see anything during that vote canvas that we would question whether or not that all of the votes that we are accepting and we certify as the vote canvas are true, valid votes from Sedgwick County and that nothing was influenced by any outside agency?
I would say that I am fully confident that, I mean, there's always going to be, people can always say whatever they want to say, but the fact that this comes with no strings attached, the fact that this gives, no one involves in this any additional authority or access to our office in any way, shape, or form, you know, all the security measures we have in place now are the same security measures, it doesn't change any of that. And I am comfortable with saying that I do not believe that this can impact our vote in any way, shape, or form.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Tabitha.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I just want to say, I do have confidence in our election staff and our election commissioner. I think we're doing a great job in Sedgwick County. We've, I think we've, we've set the standard, set the bar very high in our state on how elections should be ran, and I have total confidence in our processes and procedures and our staff and our equipment. And frankly, one of the things that bothers me about this entire discussion is that it kind of comes at us with the assumption that there's a problem to be solved. If you read the information from the Center for Tech and Civic Life specifically, it says the purpose of the grant funds is they must be used exclusively for the public purpose of planning and operating safe and secure election administration in Sedgwick County in 2020. That's pretty specific. And so let me just say upfront, we have appropriated funds, we listen to the election office if they have needs, we want to know them. I would say we want to know what the long-term plan is for retiring election equipment and replacing that over time. I know we may have budget challenges going forward, but we need to know what the plan is, and we need to be able to plan ahead over periods of years to have the funds necessary to replace and add equipment as needed. Let's talk about, a little bit, I appreciate the fact that, you know, there was information given to the election office in early September. I don't normally read election news, but I went and looked, and sure enough, this whole thing started around the 1st of September. Nationwide, there was announcements, and there was a lot of credit given to Mark Zuckerberg with Facebook, and so that's not something I was aware of. And when it came to us on October the 1st, which again was last Thursday, there was reference made to the Center for Tech and Civic Life. I didn't take time to go look them up and find out who they were. I was surprised when I found out through a news story from the Wichita Eagle, the headline says, "Facebook founder Mark Zuckerberg's money will help run Sedgwick County 2020 elections." Well, that's pretty alarming. I've had, I have received some very concerning emails from people, and I think that's rightfully so. There's concerns about who is influencing elections, and I agree with Commissioner Layman. I don't think there's actually anything from this Center for Tech and Civic Life that I think is partisan advantage about this grant. I don't think that's, I don't think there's anything happening here that would give either party any type of advantage because of this money. But there is a connection to Facebook and Mark Zuckerberg in terms of where does the money actually come from originally? I mean, I also say that it is our duty as commissioners to fund elections. It's one of our core functions of Sedgwick County government. We have levied tax dollars and we have appropriated funds for the sole purposes of running elections in Sedgwick County. We have been offered through the government, this Help America Vote Act, additional funds from the Secretary of State, which I understand is going to be used to enhance our plan, our strategic plan for this election specifically. And that's great, and I support that. We've already placed a number of ballot boxes throughout Sedgwick County as a result of that grant from the state of Kansas. I believe we've also, and I know the commissioner's on the line, please correct me if I'm wrong, I think we've also purchased or have planned to purchase ballot printers so we can print ballots at the poll sites if they're needed. If there's a run-on, a ballot style that's not available and there's people who want to vote by paper, we need to be able to have a paper ballot, a traditional paper ballot at that location, they could print a paper ballot using that ballot printer. I believe that's the purpose. But nevertheless, we have received those funds, and they are doing some good things. Second of all, we, as a large county, have also received nearly $100 million in CARES funds, and some of that money is being utilized for elections as well. And so we have money available through several different resources to take care of our needs of the election office. So having said all that, going on down in the details of what the Center for Life and Center for Tech and Civic Life say, they state specifically, again, it's about the 2020 election, general election of 2020 in Sedgwick County, in terms of our award. It goes on down, it says that we can use it for no other purpose. By the way, we don't have someone like Whit O'Brien holding our hand on this one. If we do it wrong, there's a potential consequence. It says here in their letter to us that the grantee, that's us, has indicated that the amount of the grant shall be expended on the following specific election administration needs. Quote, it says ballot drop boxes. Again, we've already got some, I don't know how many more we would need, and if we have time to place those and advertise the location of those, where there we go. I don't know how many more we would need. Says poll worker recruitment funds, that's probably fine, hazard pay, we've already approved that, essentially means the word appropriate. We've already appropriated a $2 pay increase for our poll workers and supervising judges, and/or training expenses, polling place rental, and cleaning expenses for early voting on Election Day, temporary staffing, voting materials and languages other than English, and election administration equipment. And that's pretty, that last little phrase there is quite vague, doesn't tell us exactly what that means. In the letter, in the email I got from Tom last night at 8:13 PM, it clarifies, we're going to spend this money on 100 Express vote machines, that's $423,000. One of my concerns is, are we going to be able to reorder those and receive those, unpackage them, assemble them if necessary, program them, test them, and place them in poll sites before 26 days from now? That's a pretty big requirement. Also, 70 ballot on-demand printers. Again, this enhances, I think, what we've already purchased or have said we would purchase. Again, it talks about the hazard pay. Again, it's very clear in here that this is for things that are not currently appropriated. So I'm concerned about the fact we've already made a decision to fund this through other means, and yet now we're going to switch the source of funding from what we had already decided to this. That's $83,000. And on it goes, there's a space rental for storage of additional equipment, $20,000. So we buy all this new equipment, we have to have a place to store it. And then promotion of early voting ballot drop boxes and other language materials, which I think we're already doing. And then operating supplies, that's $93,000, and it's not defined exactly what that would be. I would say if we need anything to operate this election, I hope we already have a plan to appropriate those things we need to operate this election. My point is this, even if you subtract out the equipment and look at the other items on this list, you're down to about $200,000 out of the $800,000 we've been offered. It goes on down in items eight and nine of the contract, it says, "This grant may not supplant previously appropriated funds. The grantee shall not reduce the budget of the election commissioner or fail to appropriate or provide previously budgeted funds to the election department for the term of this grant." It says, "Any amount supplanted, reduced, or not provided in contravention of this paragraph shall be repaid to CTCL up to the total amount of this grant." Says they may, it says they may ask for the return of all or part of the grant funds if it determines in its sole judgment that we have done it wrong. My point is, we don't have Whit O'Brien, this is happening extremely quick. I would just say this, if we are going to go forward, there needs to be an affirmative vote by this commission to take on this risk. I think it sends the wrong message that we are using, if you will, private funds from organizations such as this to fund our election. It's unnecessary. We've already appropriated funds, we're already on top of it, our staff is doing a great job, we have a tremendous strategic plan, we're executing that plan flawlessly. People in Sedgwick County can rest assured we have a safe and secure election going forward. This money is a lot of money. We purchased equipment back in 2015, I think it was, we spent about $7 million on election equipment, and we need to have a plan on how to do that every so many years. This is a great opportunity for our future equipment. But let's be clear, this mission statement specifically addresses the 2020 general election of Sedgwick County. And I think there's risk in doing this and then up to them to decide whether or not we've done it wrong and then require us to pay that money back with property tax funds on stuff I'm not sure we would even buy if we had our own money on the table. So it's easy to make decisions to spend money in 26 days using other people's money, but understand this puts our own money at risk. So to the issue of, is this a partisan issue? I don't know that it is, but this is a lot of money. And let me just say, the reason this got accepted, I appreciate you, Tom, Manager Stoltz, appreciate your effort on this. I know no one does everything 100% the way commissioners expect, but you have emergency powers and you have the right to approve this. But it is a very different way of funding the elections, and I have grave concerns that this one sends the wrong message to our people, our constituents, our voters, that we needed Mark Zuckerberg to solve a problem we don't have. So I'm going to oppose this. In fact, I think there needs to be an affirmative vote to accept this grant, and the default by this commission should be that we don't accept the grant unless there's a vote by the commission to do so. And if we need to make a motion to say that, I will do that, but I would hope that someone else will make a motion. If they want to accept this money, please make a motion to make, to accept the funds so that I may vote no on that motion. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Howell, Commissioner Cruz wants to say something, but you've said quite a bit. I think it's a little disingenuous that you quoted $423,000 in vote machines from an email we received at 8 o'clock last night, and you said, can we get them or not? If you read the first sentence right below that, it says-
Let me read the sentence. It says, "We have confirmed with the distributor of the election vote machines could be delivered." I would prefer the word would be delivered.
Okay.
It says could, which leaves question marks. And again, once again, if they deliver these to us on Sunday before the election, it may not be, it may not meet our needs in terms of our schedule to unpack them and program them and test them and distribute those to the right poll sites.
I'll finish your sentence. Could be delivered and up and running before the general election. I think it's a little bit misleading that you quote this and you say the other way. You didn't include the manager's comment that it could be, we have confirmed it could be delivered. Now, would be, could be, whatever you want to say, but when he says he confirmed it could be, I think it was a little bit disingenuous. And the other thing is that this group, that CTCL, Tabitha, you've dealt with them for how many years or not?
Sorry, I had to unmute my phone. I have dealt with them probably for at least five or six years, I would say.
Have they ever, have they ever provided equipment or grant or guidance or anything that you've used before?
They provide us with a lot of tools that we utilize that save us from having to buy outside software, anything from, we can put in information on what all is on our ballot and estimate how long it will take somebody to fill out a ballot, how long our lines might be, things like that. We utilize tools like that. We have utilized some of their training options, like cybersecurity training, things like that, but they have not offered a grant. Like I said when I was talking earlier, this is brand new, we've never seen this before in the entire time I've been in elections. This is not something we've dealt with before, that a grant came from someplace other than a government entity.
When they supplied you tools and guidance and training tools and everything else, did they say that it only had to be used in that year and you could not use them after that?
No, and in fact, I would just mention that the email I got more recently does offer some clarification to some of the questions that Commissioner Howell had. So if it's okay, I would actually like to read a sentence from that. It says, "The FAQ lists examples of covered expenses, but it is not an exhaustive list. We fielded questions about voting booths, which is a kind of a terminology for voting machines or paper ballot stations, whatever, photocopiers that are ventilation for your polling places, more secure doors for your warehouses, trailers to transport election day supplies, power generators, nonpartisan newspaper apps, posters, and answers, yes, that's all I've heard." Exclamation point.
Okay.
So to me, the things that we have, they've just clarified that all those things are, would be covered. Just because we would use it for this year doesn't mean we can't continue using it after this year. It's what, to me, what they just put in writing in an email to me clarifies earlier today.
Okay.
So I hope that's what those questions-
That helps a little bit. Yep. Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Chairman, you know, I hear constantly from commissioners about, screaming about spending taxpayer dollars, and now we're receiving a private grant that is not taxpayer dollars to help secure an election that will allow for shorter wait times for people who want to vote. I feel like not accepting this grant is an act of voter suppression, and I really feel like we have to, we have a right and we have a duty to ensure that people who want to vote in person can do that safely and securely. We have to social distance, we have to wear masks, we have to do these things that are unprecedented now, and this will allow us to have shorter wait times at more locations with more machines. I just feel like screaming about spending taxpayer dollars and now we're screaming about taking private donations is ridiculous. I want to know, Mr. Papoun, do we have to have a motion? I mean, I think the other thing that's really important is that our CFO is the most cautious person, I mean, even almost to a fault. And I love you, and I say that with the most respect that I can. But we have an incredibly competent staff who has vetted this, who has taken the time to ensure that, I don't believe that anyone, our election commissioner, our county manager, our CFO, I don't believe any one of these people wants to put our county at risk in any way, shape, or form. I think that's apparent from every single time that Lindsay is up on the podium talking about, don't do it, don't do it, don't do it. So if anybody was skeptical of this, it would be her, and she has given us the green light. So back to my original question to our county counselor, do we have to have a motion to accept this, given our county manager has authority to accept this grant under emergency?
Well, the strict answer to your question, Commissioner, is no, there does not have to be a vote to- to be a vote to use this money. It's already gone through the process. Manager used his authority to authorize the grant. It's gone through the vetting process, like you say. It's gone through all of Lindsey's checks and balances. No, it doesn't, action doesn't have to be taken. Now, could the county commission overrule that action? Could the majority vote? Absolutely, if they wanted to. But no action has to be taken unless the commission wants to do it, so.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm finished. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. My only concern about this is who's funding it. I think any American should be concerned if Mark Zuckerberg is trying to go around the country giving money to election offices. He's a major founder in that organization with the funding. Generally, these grants that we accept, and I have no trouble with accepting grants. We do that a lot. And I would rather accept a grant than use property tax dollars. My issue is this organization and being funded, as reported by the White Feigl, by Mark Zuckerberg, and that is why I am not supportive or comfortable with it. And you can try to change the narrative, but at the end of the day, Zuckerberg is a major founder or donor to this organization, and that should be unsettling to any voter in our county.
Commissioner Cruz?
I think it's ironic that people are using Facebook now to buy paid advertisements for their campaigns but don't want to accept funds that are going to help us secure a safe election for every single person wanting to vote.
Commissioner Howe?
Thank you. This is a question for Manager Stoltz or possibly Commissioner Layman. Do we believe we have a safe and secure election right now? Whether we, if we don't accept this money, are there concerns about our safety or security of this election?
Sorry. No, we can conduct this election, and we are prepared to do so. As I mentioned at the beginning of my comments, there is a difference between what I would come to you during trying troubling times and ask for versus if someone's giving us an opportunity. I will reiterate that I fully respect the commission's authority on this decision, and we will abide by whatever your decision is. Of course, we would love to utilize this money if that is the will of the board, but also we will continue the direction we were headed before this money came to our attention, if that is your will as well, so.
Well, since I have her on the line, can you speculate or guesstimate, what's our number of voters we're expecting to vote in this election? Do we have an idea, what estimate at this point?
You know, it's a little bit hard to know. All the numbers of this year have been completely up and down. I would say we should expect probably close to somewhere between 220,000 to 250,000 people to cast a ballot, is my guess. And that's a lot. That is a lot, especially when only 85,000 people requested a ballot by mail, so that is still a lot of in-person voting that we're going to be doing. And I don't think we're going to get a significant increase in the amount of people who are requesting a ballot by mail at this point because our numbers are just trickling down to about, I think, around 1,000 requests a day that we're receiving, is what my staff's reporting to me. And so we are not seeing a significant increase as we come into those final days. I think people have been saturated with the request, and if they intended to request a ballot by mail, they would have already done so.
So if we have 150,000 voters go to poll sites on election day, what's the, if that was to happen, what would our wait times be approximately, do you think?
I don't know that off the top of my head. Of course, we also calculate in that we expect to probably have, you know, tens of thousands of people vote early as well, so we would take more than that 150,000 off before election day. But if we, you know, if we have 100,000 people vote in person, it's going to be a stretch for us. I mean, we're not, with this equipment, I want to be very, very clear, we're not looking at adding more polling places at this point. It's too late. What we're looking at being able to do is potentially put more polling, you know, more voting machines, say, at Intrastate Arena and at some of our larger early voting sites and things like that, and having more backups available than we have now. So that if a machine goes down, we're not perpetuating it longer. We can at least replace it and still continue voting. So I just want to be very clear, we're not talking this with a facilitate, it's too late in the game to add more polling places, and we don't have the staff to do that, even if it wasn't at this point. But we just facilitate adding machines at some of those locations and then having backups available to us if machines go down.
I can't give you a reference as to where I'm hearing this, but I think I've heard it numerous places that we're setting records in terms of mail ballot applications. For an election like this, we're setting records in terms of numbers of people who are requesting mail ballots. Is that true?
Yes, we are. We have, like, for instance, in 2016, we mailed out 65,000 ballots, and we already have 85,000 requested. Of course, our number of registered voters has increased significantly. We are approaching 316,000 registered voters at this point. So, you know, those numbers are percentage-wise, I think we're at about 20, last time I looked, I think we're at about 27% of total registered voters have requested a ballot by mail. To put that into perspective, however, Johnson County has already processed, I think, like 135,000 requests, and yes, they have like 420-some, 430,000 registered voters, so they have far fewer than we do. And they still have a backlog. They just said they have boxes of applications still to process and are receiving them. So the tone towards mail ballot voting here in Sedgwick County is definitely different than it is in other places. So while we are seeing record numbers, it is not the numbers that I expected to see coming into this when we did our budgets and things like that for this year. But that does not mean that we are, I mean, as has been previously stated, we receive $400,000 from, through the Secretary of State, from the federal government that has been allocated. Most of what's left on that, I believe, is things like postage, increased postage for, because we have significantly more ballots by mail in the primaries than we budgeted for and things like that. So there are expenses like that, cleaning of polling places for the general election, those have not been expended yet, that those funds are allocated to those sorts of things.
About what percentage, I'm sorry, I'm trying to, you're fine. About what percentage of our voters will vote advanced in person ahead of Tuesday, what percentage of our voters will potentially vote on advanced, early voting at a number of advanced sites?
We normally see around 60% of our voters vote a combination of in-person and by mail. What we are seeing across the nation, I will just be honest, has me a little perturbed on early voting. I mean, it's great that we are seeing locations that hours before they open, they have hundreds of people in line to vote. And most of those states are states that only allow one or two voting, early voting locations per county. So we are in a, definitely in a much different scenario than a lot of those states are in. But until we get into early voting and see how many people are choosing to utilize that, it's just, this year is just so unknown. I can't even begin to guess what we're going to see. So it's just that, I'm sorry, I can't be more educated on that, but it is, just seems to be the year of, just like everything else, that we just don't know what we're-
With respect to the advanced voting, there's an abundance of equipment available for the advanced voting sites. Is that correct? We deploy things on election day, but there's available equipment. You could relocate that, if you will. So I would say there's a problem, there would be an abundance of equipment available to those advanced poll sites because there's only, you know, a dozen of them compared to the 80-something, 80-plus poll sites we have on election day. Is that correct?
I apologize. Some of what you were saying, I was having trouble hearing, if I'm understanding your question correctly, you're saying what this would do would be to allow us to have an abundance of equipment?
I'm saying with our current resources, we have an abundance of equipment available for advanced voting poll sites that happened before Tuesday. We have plenty of equipment for the advanced sites regardless of this grant.
I would not say plenty from what we're seeing across the country. I would say we are utilizing every voting machine we own, and if one goes down, it's going to affect us. And we, that is, I mean, we do happen to holding back to use the backups, but frankly, what we're doing is we're utilizing the touchscreens because they're not counting ballots. We can reuse those from early voting to election day. So the machines that we send out to Intrastate Arena, we will then reuse those as backup machines on election day. So we are, we will pretty much have no equipment in our warehouse on election day. It's going to be pretty sparse.
Yeah.
We have some set for backup, but if we have too many go down, I think we're going to have maybe 20 set for backup, that's going to be the point.
What I was referring to was the advanced voting, the in-person voting that happens ahead of Tuesday for about five days or so. We have advanced voting in a select number of poll sites. We have abundance of equipment for those five days of advanced voting. Is that correct?
Those machines, well, we're maxing, most of those sites maxing out the space, but there are several sites that we could send more equipment, like, say, the extension office, the machinist hall that have more space if we had more equipment. So we have enough compared to what we've used in the past. And I would like to clarify. I will give you the scenario. I like to compare 16 to 20, and you know very well that we've bought new voting equipment. We've added 20 polling places since 2016. So we are in a much better place than we were in 2016 to serve our voters well. And it's how we know what, who's going to show up, when and where. It's just, here is just very unknown. So I hesitate to guarantee anything. I'm sorry.
That's fine. I have one more question for you and then one for Lindsey, and then I'll be done with my questioning. So my final question for you, Commissioner Layman, is do you believe we are disenfranchising any voter in Sedgwick County or suppressing any voter in Sedgwick County? Or does everybody who has a desire to vote in Sedgwick County, are we accommodating them and their desire to vote?
Okay. I apologize again. What I'm hearing through the phone line is kind of cutting in and out. And so I believe what you're asking me is, do I believe if we don't accept this grant, we're going to disenfranchise voters with the budget and everything and plan as we have it right now?
That is correct. Is every voter in Sedgwick County afforded the opportunity to vote? Or are we disenfranchising people who want to vote who otherwise cannot vote because of this grant?
Well, again, that's going to come back to my answer of, there are so many unknowns with this. I don't believe we're going to disenfranchise voters. I hope we're not going to. But again, we don't know what the lines are going to be. We don't know how many people. The rhetoric has changed so much around this election and the conversation and people, I mean, we are, I mean, I spent all my morning today responding to emails today, and multiple of those have been people who had already applied for a ballot requesting to cancel it. Things like this, things are moving so quickly in this election for us that it's very difficult for me. I believe that the plan we have in place will work, absolutely. I don't believe we're going to just disenfranchise people by not taking this money, but could we make it easier for them with the money? Yes, we could. But again, at this point, that's not my decision, and I will leave that up to you all. I've said my piece, and you know my opinion, and I'll just stop talking.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Layman, for your answers. And let me just answer the question for you the way I believe that I would hear the answer. That is, we're not disenfranchising any voter in Sedgwick County. There is no voter suppression. Everybody who wants to vote, we welcome them. There's lots of ways to vote. There's a lot of effort to communicate on how to vote, and I believe we're doing a good job. And let me credit your office, that we're doing a good job of communicating to the people who want to vote how to do that, and we provide opportunities multiple ways. And so I don't want anybody to walk away saying that this $816,000 is somehow going to suppress voters or disenfranchise voters. I don't think that's the message. We have a safe and secure election plan. It's a strategic plan, and we're doing a great job. My last question for CFO is, again, I'd like you to say, are you 1,000% sure that we're not going to have to repay any of this money based on this plan? Because we don't have Whit O'Brien. Are you telling me that there's no way we're going to have to pay this money back?
Based on the plans I have seen to date, I have no concerns that we will have to repay it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. Tabitha, will this make it easier for your staff to conduct an election?
Of course. Money always makes things easier.
The one thing-
But to be honest, I mean, if we're just going to be 100% on some laid out there, it will, there are some things that will complicate it. You know, adding machines is, Commissioner Howe talked about. We have discussed that internally and how we would do that. We have discussed it with the vendor on timing of getting them. They would get here, you know, later this month, obviously, because it's already October. We would be scrambling, definitely. But we, I just want to make sure I'm telling both sides of it. Yes, it will help, but it will also complicate some things just because of the timing of it. And again, I'll take responsibility for that with not following up on my emails when I was in the hospital, but I just want to make sure I'm very forthright on both sides of that one.
Okay. So the additional, a couple of weeks ago, I asked about whether we were communicating with all sectors of our community around where our ballot boxes were, how they were going to be able to, you know, know where to go, know how to do this. And I was told that there was no money to translate any of this stuff into Spanish or Vietnamese or any other languages. And so this will allow us, since there is money now, to translate into other languages where our boxes are, where our voting locations are. So I think it's important that we make sure that we didn't have translation services or communications plan in place. I think that that's important to point out. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For our CFO, do we receive any grants from, other than other government agencies? Do we, we get 50, 60 grants a year, it seems like. I can recall that we've get a number of people that donate to com care and so forth. Do we routinely get grants from private organizations?
Commissioner, I wouldn't say we routinely get grants, but we do routinely get donations from private folks for com care, for maybe suicide-related events. For the sheriff, certainly, they get a number. The fire district gets a lot. I think Commissioner Cruz had asked a similar question yesterday, and I think the closest thing we have seen in terms of a formal grant from a private entity was the Arts Council back in 2018 that provided 50,000 for that big turtle sculpture at the art park. So I'm not sure it's, I'd say it's routine to accept grants, but it's certainly not outside of what we've done.
Very good. Thank you. Well, I was a little bit concerned, honestly, when I read the newspaper. But I, and I've talked to Dion. He's in the back of the room, so it's, he knows that I've talked to him. The Eagles' job is to sell newspapers, and sometimes they sensationalize what they put in order to sell newspapers. So I understand that. Whenever Dion puts something in the paper, I usually talk to him about it because it causes us some concern. And identifying Mark Zuckerberg in the article has caused concern from the public, because I've received voicemails and feedback from several people that were concerned about that. But I don't know that it diminishes the fact that we can offset future purchases and things that can make our election run smoother right now by accepting 800 to some thousand dollars. I know, as Commissioner Howe stated, that yes, we do have money in the budget to conduct elections, but if we can do a better job of conducting elections, I don't see a problem with that. We receive funds from a lot of different sources. And so I know that Commissioner Howe wants us to go on record for something, and I had a lot of concerns. Commissioner O'Donnell and I talked about it Friday, that when I read the newspaper article, and it doesn't tell the whole story. So I don't see any reason we would not accept something that has no strings attached whatsoever, that will not affect the outcome of the election, that will not make anything worse. It will make it better. It's going to, our election commissioner thinks it's a good idea. Our CFO thinks it's a good idea. If this had any chance whatsoever of affecting the outcome of the election, I'd be completely against it. But I can't see any place that it's going to affect the outcome of the election. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question for our CFO, or this might be for Manager Stoltz, but either one of you can answer this. And when we have accepted that type of a grant or donation in the past, we have, as a board, considered that and made a formal action to receive those donations. Is that correct?
We absolutely do, sir. And to Commissioner Dennis's point before, this is very unusual, how we have, how this has happened.
I find that troubling. I have one question over the plan, and maybe you can answer this one, but there's an asterisk by the, take that back, never mind on that. Ballot drop boxes installation, security camera fees. Are we planning to put security cameras on these drop boxes? on these drop boxes?
Tabitha or Anna, do you want to talk about security of drop boxes?
Yes, Anna Meyer, Central Services Manager, we are following the guidance from the Department of Homeland Security and the Secretary of State's office, and there will be a security camera on every single ballot drop box.
So once again, we're gonna have this done in 26 days? Okay. You know, I think the biggest reason to vote for this probably is for future elections, has less to do with this election and possibly would enhance future elections with additional equipment. But I don't think there's any way for us to really absorb this $816,000 and do it in a way that's gonna substantially impact the general election of 2020 for Sedgwick County. But I'll tell you what, I've heard three commissioners make comments that they're supporting this idea, so let's just cut to the chase. I'd like to make a motion to accept the grant from Center for Tech and Civic Life for the purposes that they've outlined and the amount of $816,458.
Spin a motion in a second. Is this another motion that you make that you can vote against?
It's all right. I'm planning on voting no.
You might have been full disclosure, as you've been failing to disclose-
That's fine, I think you all know from my comments, I'm not supporting this, I do want to have a vote on record that I'm not supporting this, I think that we need to be on record.
That's what you should announce, that I want to make a motion for something that I don't want to vote for.
Okay.
That would be a more honest motion, is if you let the public and everybody know you're making a motion that you're gonna vote against.
I'll be glad to explain my motion-
That's fine.
-after we get a second, but I wanted to make the motion for us-
You got a second, you got a second.
Thank you. Well, I'll just say upfront, I plan on voting no, I think I've made my case, and-
I think it'd be helpful if you announced before that, before you make a motion.
All right, thank you, Chairman.
Spin a motion in a second to accept the grant. Madam Clerk, I don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
No.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, next item.
Consent agenda.
Commissioner, Tom Stoltz.
Thanks, Chairman. Commissioners, Tom Stoltz, County Manager, recommend approval of consent items N through Z.
Okay, we have consent items N through Z. Is there any questions about any of them need to be polled for comment? Being not, I'll make a motion to approve items N through Z.
Second.
No other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Mr. Papo, any legislative issues?
Mr. Chairman, I think we're going to be transitioning this portion of the agenda to Mr. Ashford, and so I think he has a few comments to make about this.
Good afternoon, Commission Chairman. Commissioners, Hakeem Ashford, Director of Communications. So when I was hired, I was told that I would help Mike take over the legislative platform and kind of get that started, so this is all new to me, so please be kind, if you could. So early in September, I sent an email to the organization management team asking for specific department input for the 2021 legislative platform. I set aside a deadline for feedback as of close of business today, so I should get those this afternoon, and I will compile those along with some input from Mike and others. I was also introduced to Jason Watkins, our contract, as a legislative lobbyist, to take part in helping us kind of help draft this agenda, and then also during the legislative session starting in January. I've also worked with Mike and Tanya to better understand the process and how to best serve the citizens and the people of Sedgwick County. Tomorrow, both myself and Ms. Tanya Cole will attend the WSU Center for Economic Development's Kansas Economic Outlook Conference, that will be a virtual conference, where Congressman Estes, as well as other leaders throughout the state, will present. We hope to hear an update from Congressman Estes on the federal legislative agenda. So I'll basically take the input from the county, the departments, you all, as well as the federal agenda, and I will have that, hopefully, and I say hopeful, I talked to Mike a little bit about this yesterday, during a staff meeting on October 20th. I do have individual meetings with you all, so hopefully next Monday, I will sit down during our meetings to kind of talk about your ideas and thoughts for the legislative process, and kind of compile all of that information and bring to you hopefully on October 20th. So that is kind of where we are in brief, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Okay. Any questions for Hakeem? Hakeem, thanks, welcome to your new role, a part of your new role.
Appreciate it.
So thanks for what you've been doing so far with us. I don't see any other questions. So Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Other?
Do any of the commissioners have anything other to share? And I don't see anything at this point. Next item, please.
Executive session.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm requesting, oh, excuse me, I move that the Board of County Commissioners request recess into executive session for 20 minutes until 1:00 PM for consultation with an attorney for the county regarding matters deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship relating in order to discuss potential legal claims against Sedgwick County, and that the Board of County Commissioners return from this room, or return to the live broadcast from executive session no sooner than 1:00 PM.
Okay, I'll second that. Commissioner Howell?
Yes, Chairman, I think that we go off KPTS at 1:00 o'clock, is there any way we could do this and come back a couple minutes before 1:00, just in case there's any action?
Just a thought.
I'll amend it to, you want to amend it to say 12:58?
Sure, that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session at 12:58. Tony is-
I'll second that. Spin a motion in a second to go into executive session returning at 12:58. No other comment? Yeah, you made the motion.
Oh, I made the motion.
Okay. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. We will go into executive session, please turn the cameras off and vacate the room.
room.